This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call this back. If everybody can have a seat. We're gonna start this meeting back up. Alright, so. Before we do another thing, I'm gonna go over a quick change in how we're gonna run the agenda. We are, we just had our break, and instead of having public speak before we discuss our site visit reports, we are going to do the site visit reports first, so that the public has a chance to hear them, and then we will have public speak. And then we will start our discussion, and eventually, hopefully, take a successful vote. Then we'll go into executive session, and we will return, hopefully, with great news. So. But before we even go over the site visit notes, I wanna do a real personal thank you to our search committee and to Sue Colby. We, this was a smooth process, but I think after everybody's seen these interviews, we ended up with three very, very strong candidates. It's gonna be a tough decision and a tough conversation tonight, but that's a good thing, because we have three very, very strong people. So I wanna say thank you, and I'll be sending out a thank you card to the search committee. You have to give me all the notes, it'll fill it all out, and one to Sue, because this was done really nicely. So that's my personal thank you. So, I ask you to be patient, because we took lots of notes. You're not giving every note that we took, because you've been here till tomorrow. But, we went through, the three visits were myself, Ben, and Shannon. And we wanna share with you the highlights of what we, what really stood out for us. So a lot of times, for me, you're just gonna hear bulleted remarks of what people said about each candidate. And then we'll have Ben and then we'll have Shannon.
Okay.
Alright. So, the first one I wanna talk about is Dr. Erica Fikinski-Stark.
Can I break in just for a moment? Does it make sense to talk about, like everyone talks about Dr. Fikinski-Stark, and hear from all three sites?
We can do that. Do that sound good?
And then, just to loop them together?
Sure.
That would help me.
That sounds good.
Sorry.
No, I think that sounds very good. Okay, I think they're gonna be pretty close to each other, though. So, everyone said that she has detailed planning. And what they were amazed by is that that includes all areas of special ed. And people related over and over again that PD is often something that special ed gets left out of, and different departments get left out of, and they're just carried along to do PD that isn't necessarily something that's going to benefit them. So, according to everybody, she started PD that applies to everybody's needs. So particularly special ed and council, so that everybody in the system feels as though they get what they need. She understands all areas of homeless, SEL, ELL, ESL, and she's student-oriented. She can have difficult conversations with people, because she first develops relationships with them. She will not ask you to do anything she would not do. She is approachable and makes people feel comfortable. She's not afraid to say she made a mistake. She's great about emails and reminders, and she believes in diversity and inclusion for all. She told you a little last night, the other night, I think it was last night, yeah, about an experience she had with a family from Afghanistan. And what we were told is that when that family came, they were too intimidated to come into the district, to come into the building. So Erica went with an interpreter, and helped the family to feel comfortable, went to the home, helped the family feel comfortable, and then helped the family and the children transition into the school, so that they felt welcomed in this nation, in their city, and in their school. And then people talked about this family from Puerto Rico, and it was really heartwarming for me, I'll tell you. A couple came, and the wife was extremely shy, and not someone who would normally wanna talk to people, and certainly not in groups. However, they were so, they felt so touched by Dr. Fikinski-Stark's attention to them, that they came in and she actually spoke. So the story they told is that when they left because of Hurricane Maria, they left with one bag each. And she came with a translator to their house, to where they were staying, found out what they needed, because they had very little, they had just this one bag that they had carried. So she helped them transition to school, made them feel welcomed. And this mother said that Erica gave her a voice, that she had joined, she had joined the family, the parent organization, and someone who never speaks out loud, because of Erica, she was able to say what she felt, and start to give her opinions. She gave me a voice and the confidence to speak. And then, the last thing is that she arranged everything, so they could stay in Ludlow. So again, that was just very heartwarming, because here's somebody coming after a terrible tragedy with very little, and there's somebody there to listen, to help, and help get them settled. They talked about family nights for Title I and EL families. And again, the families that spoke talked about how they don't feel like they can't walk into the building. They don't feel like they don't have a place. They have a voice, because she started all these family nights. And she's always present, always there, always talking to them, and that gave them confidence. She sees the big picture. People talked about all the grants that she's found, she's always finding money. She's brought many, many new initiatives to the district. You can ask her any question you want, and she won't make you feel like you should've known the answer. She has a great deal of knowledge about the budget, she can work with all people at all levels. Her strengths are that she's a perfectionist in attending detail, she's great with people, and always does what's best for the children. Her weakness, she does too much, and she needs a work-life balance. If you have a question, call her. She accepts feedback, she's diplomatic, respectful, does not micromanage, and she lets people soar. She believes that you can't just educate our kids, you have to address their needs. Now, she arranged to have PSATs for all students in the 10th grade be free of charge. She found the money for that through grants. She finds money for other initiatives through grants. She gets better every year. She did 20 years of technology upgrades in just two years. She has never been top-down, but always a two-way communicator. And her final three words were, three phrases to describe her, down-to-earth, with sense of humor, and kind.
Do you want me to read everything here?
Yep.
So the way I did this, the day was set up where we went to a central office, and people came to us for four hours from across the district. We had a wide variety of stakeholders. And so I just broke up my notes according to who we were talking to. So I took a lot of notes, so I'll just give you a quick rundown of what stood out. The first person we talked to was the Director of Special Ed. Some quotes. Erica is an excellent collaborator. Erica helps people know what they need to be. She knows all populations in the district, good person, positivity, good working relationship, very good at PD planning, gets plan to people a week or more in advance. She helped bring the Dibbles screening, which is like a dyslexia program. The question is always, how do you meet the needs of all the kids? She is always in tune with that. This was a repetition throughout the day, that people were gonna be very sad to see her go, not sure what they were gonna do when she was gone. ELL has grown 100% in a year. She cleaned up regulations to make sure kids get seen. She is the go-to when it comes to helping with policy, procedure. She's practical about it. She does right by children and families. She's a professional, can be tough and soft as needed. Really good at building relationships, parents like her. Sometimes they prefer her to other admin. Pride for the district, very approachable, makes people feel comfortable, honest, thoughtful, phenomenal with DEI. Went to families' homes to help people feel comfortable and safe. She takes responsibility, shows appreciation to everybody, everybody is equal in running things. She's willing, open to learn, hardworking, trustful, thoughtful, honest. Possible weakness, the professionalism. Her professionalism can sometimes be off-putting, but her professionalism contributes to what makes her great. She has two kids with IEPs, she understands the special education landscape. Someone said, this person said, "I would trust her with my kids." Then we had a collection of parents come in and speak with us. Some things that came out, really great, very sweet, very attentive, great mom and person. She's a comfortable person to be around. She looks for who needs support, looks for who needs help, and she helps. If Ludlow loses her, that would be a big loss. She helped make Title I programs incredible. She set up family nights, EL family night, Title I family night. Was instrumental in helping, this is what Cindy was just saying, instrumental in helping settle a family who had come from Puerto Rico with six kids, after Maria, they had nothing. Erica helped them get clothes, housing, as well as making sure all the kids were brought into the schools. The mother of this family said, "She gave me confidence to express myself." There are no uncomfortable power dynamics, she's not power-hungry, she smiles, knows who people are, and is always happy to see them. Next up was the business manager, Director of Operations, plus the Director of Information and Communication Technology. It's going to stink when she leaves, she's a workhorse. When she says something will get done, it gets done. Great with tech, advocate for tech. She has a wide view of tech in the district. She's good at seeing the whole picture, the district as a whole. She tracks her budget, she can handle big projects, juggle many responsibilities. She understands what the budget, that the budget is not a black-and-white document, costs change, and she gets that. She's on top of the budget, always gives a heads-up, and is great at following up. Deeply committed to the rights of homeless students. You can ask her any question you want, and she won't think you're an idiot. Professional, can talk to everyone, can fit in with the custodians all the way to the top. When it comes to budget, she will want to be heavily involved, an experienced business officer will want. Will work well with her, she's not intimidated. Principals in the schools were next. They said, one principal who had previously been an interim superintendent said, "She has a wealth of experience, she's well-versed in budgets, grants, EL, laws. She researches everything related to curriculum development. Takes all opinions before making decisions. She knows everything about everything. She has a lot of her plate and does it all. Knows all the laws, super articulate, always professional. Started a successful mentoring program for teachers. She's always communicating, she works closely with the district lawyer. She can be tough, but gives you time to think about things and never leaves no sense. Very smart, strong. She knows everybody and remembers them. She's professional while also being a tremendous human being. She keeps it light. Possible weakness or room for growth, the life balance, as Cindy said, needs work. She works too much, but her main goal is always moving the district forward and working, working out what's best for kids. Then we had secondary teachers. One of the biggest achievements was the columns writing program, they're in year six of that. Erica listens to teachers' feedback, her responsibilities are vast. It's impressive how well she deals with parents, she stands up for the district and students, she's strong and diplomatic. SEL, Erica did a training that was available, she worked for years getting SEL program up and running, listened to what teachers needed. Supports, but doesn't micromanage. Always asking, "What do you want, what do you need?" MCAS testing, she loves data, loves to analyze it, uses map testing to shape policies. A growth area for her here might be communication, can sometimes be a little unclear, though she has improved. She wears too many hats. Tons of energy, wants to do everything, passionate. Elementary teachers and reading specialist was next. They had meetings, readings, and planning sessions, she was always there, organized. Already versed in dyslexia guidelines, she's taking a class on the science of reading, she wants to learn. Brought decodable books into the district, up on latest trends, very hard worker. She brought in Teach Point, an evaluation tool for teachers. She's always in buildings, knows details of people, pays attention, she's in close contact with teachers, very much open to new kinds of ed tech. Follows the evolution of best practices, rolls out new stuff, helps with integration. She might seem intimidating when you first meet her, but once you get to know her, easy, relatable. She is patient with the learning curve people need. Super accessible, covering so many areas of the district. And then lastly, superintendent, a superintendent, a school committee member came in, and the school committee member reported that Todd Gazda, who's the former superintendent of Ludlow, and now runs the Educational Collaborative, said that she's gonna be a superintendent one day. She thinks globally, but understands and can act on a micro level. She's an experienced manager, strong central office experience, years of curriculum instruction, former math teacher, great with budgets, knows deems and outs, good to work with, hilarious personality, incredibly hard worker. Thank you for listening.
So I have notes as well, from the visit. My biggest problem that I had was, I didn't understand what her role was. Like, I didn't know what her position was. So they did explain it to me that she is the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. I'm just gonna go through and read my notes real quick. So, very welcoming, collaborates with the whole team, very quick to respond, in a timely fashion, not quick to respond, I mean, meaning. Attentive, family-oriented, community-driven, inclusive, healthy team, very smart, knowledgeable, handles grace... Oh, sorry, handles situations with grace, building relationships, not afraid to get dirty. General style is approachable, transparent, honest, thoughtful. I see things from all perspectives. We'll get in the car and do a home visit if necessary. Superintendent is just as important as the janitors. Not afraid to admit if she's wrong, not afraid of technology and moving forward. They have a one-to-one Chromebook throughout the district. Always follows through on promises. She's the homeless coordinator. We'll get to everyone's level, so they feel understood and important, it's important, sorry. She is a people person, I'm sorry. You're having a really hard time.
Well, you're doing good.
She's a people person. And not at all intimidating, professional, but down-to-earth. Keeps conversation light and on the level of the audience. The students are the most important. Does not micromanage, but provides support when needed. Not strong at delegating, wants to do it all. Lines of communication are strong. And we did, we were told on a personal level that she does have two children, that were adopted.
That's good, yeah.
So, that's what I had, sorry.
Thank you. Okay. So, now to Dr. Jonathan Bruno. Ben did put down some of the stuff that the superintendent said, but I did not, because I was disappointed with the superintendent, as he spent the time talking about himself, rather than Dr. Bruno. He had a few things to say, other than that, he spent the whole time talking about himself. So, after that, everything got wonderful. We left that. Here's what people said about him. He's super committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. He began having teachers run workshops for PD, and this has been very successful. They feel empowered, and the teachers are always home. He's willing to take risks with new initiatives. You can't have a healthy school without a safe school. There's been a large influx of Guatemalan students, so he created a brand-new program to address their needs. He is taught, he is LBE4, so he understands the needs. He understands the needs of diverse populations. He creates a team, and creating a team is what he's good at. He's always accessible. He's quick to answer emails, will often stop in and talk to you, rather than email you back. So they talked constantly about how you might send an email, and then all of a sudden, he's there knocking on your door, because some conversations are better to have in person. Good sense of humor, the human quality. He is an administrator, but it feels like he's a teammate. He works well in a crisis and keeps his composure. Then, one of the assistant principals came and told a story. He said, "He has courage." And then he told a story about how he and Dr. Bruno discovered a human trafficking ring that was exploiting children and forcing them to do work. And he said, "Jonathan worked in every aspect to take care of those kids." He coordinated with the DA's office, he stepped up to align all the necessary agencies, and made sure that each of the children was taken care of. They got food, shelter, transition into school, made sure, after all of that was done, and he made sure all of the children were okay, then he made sure that the vice principal was okay. He reached out to him to give him the support and see if he needed to talk. He's a presence in every building. He partners with each school to determine what they need and how to address those needs. He started a new program for the district called Panorama, and that is so the staff can see grades and the social-emotional status of each child, and then all the interventions that are being tried for the child. And it's, sounds really enchanting, I like that idea. He had, there's a large ELL population, remember, there's a big influx that came in. So he has interpreters, and he got a program called Lexi-Cat, which is a real-time interpretation device. So all the messages to everybody go out in the particular language that they need. He covers for everyone when they need coverage, he's a great thought partner. He runs right with the staff when there's a crisis. One woman told us, when she was pregnant, she was eight months pregnant, and there was a student running out of the building, and she was gonna try to run out of the building and catch the student. And Dr. Bruno was just getting out of his car and coming to the building. He saw what was happening, told her to stay, ran right after the child, and got the child calmed down, settled, and back into school. He's gregarious, funny, a good listener. He's the only administrator who consistently drops in on staff to see how they are doing. He is serious of purpose with a mind at play. He can take a great idea and make it happen. Two successful other initiatives, the El PAC families are now coming into schools. They feel welcomed. There's a collaborative here partnership, he got a grant to connect pediatric offices with schools.
Okay. So yeah, we started with superintendent, who's a very mysterious person, and so I added some details that he said. Bruno's official title is Director of Learning and Teaching, which sits between two roles, sort of an Assistant Superintendent plus Curriculum Coordinator. A lot of his work is tied to DEI. He was part of an initiative, the superintendent called Undoing of Groups, which raised test scores. Some of his initiatives are DEI, creating mixed ability environments and proficiency-based learning. He helped secure around $4 million in grants, has a good set of values. ESL growth, Bruno helped that community, his outreach was positive. Every grant we write, we get. He does a lot with health and wellness, he helped hire a coordinator, involved with after-school programs, specifically the 21st Century Learning Program. Good values, bright as can be, understands learning and teaching operations. He writes well and communicates well. He's a vision maker, but sometimes you need to give people time to catch up. He will benefit from support and mentors. He's worked with parents, but hasn't had a lot of opportunities, he will build relationships. The school committee should hold him to not doing too many things simultaneously. Give him six months to learn, listen, and grow, he'd benefit from a deliberate entry plan. He has potential, but provides supports. The school committee should guide the new superintendent. Then we visited with the business director, who said he works really well on grants. Understanding the communication process, his passion is curriculum development, students doing better work. He cares about details on budget, involved in working with DESI and making connections on that level. He is willing to back up for other admin, he covers for people who need support. He spends a lot of time creating PD sessions, lets people do their work, and he does not micromanage. Then we talked to a middle school teacher and a MS clinical psychologist, I think she was. When he was hired, Bruno immediately reached out to everyone. He listened, asked what's going well, what needs to change, he made her feel good, built good relationships. Super committed to DEI, setting up PD opportunities for teachers to take part. He reaches out, he taps into expertise. He's willing to take risks and supports people who do. He has a special ed background, after-school program is huge in helping it grow. Then we had high school teachers. His PD was organized and thorough, focused on social-emotional, meeting the needs of all teachers, kind and compassionate. Former school committee member in Sheffield, they were sad to lose him. He is a grant machine. He recognized changing demographics to build support for new kids. He's good at building teams. His background as a teacher has been helpful, connects with regular specialty teachers, doesn't micromanage, is accessible. Created an admin retreat, changed how people work together. He is in many buildings, he shows up, good at synthesizing information, he builds solutions, he's team-oriented, can take in new info, not shy about making decisions. SEL notices, validates needs. The district's, the district was recently swatted and had to go into lockdown, as it turned out, he was the one, he was in one of the schools and managed the situation. He kept composure, never lost sight, handled with compassion. Possible weakness or growth area, he hasn't been a boss yet. Though he's lacking experience, he's ready to take the next step of overseeing the whole system, not just one part. He does better in small groups, conversations are better than email. High school assistant principal. One word he used to describe is courage, this is the one with the human trafficking situation. He's a good teammate, he doesn't do superficial things, he's a thought partner. He lined up the agencies to help fix a human trafficking situation. He makes sure that everyone can work together, he will step up in an impactful way. Then we had parents. The proficiency-based mindset was really hard to get through. He set up parent forums, he can communicate with high-powered parents and all classes of parents. He wants all to be included. The principal and the Director of Student Services, and then two assistant principals, joined us next. The admin retreat gave them a chance to do high-level visioning. He's been a benefit to our admin team, he helped get new teachers. He brought in Interpretation Translation Service, Lexi-Cat, he's a good thought partner. He has knowledge of special ed and elementary experience, understands data, wants to learn, seeks feedback, gives good feedback, thinks about how policies affect kids. A growth area here was, sometimes he takes too much and he gets stuck. Psychologist and clinician were the last people I think we spoke to here, and one of them said, "The district has had a lot of sickness, staff issues. He's been asked to fill roles that aren't part of his job description, he jumps right in. Does what he needs to, to be a team player, checks in with all the buildings. He's collaborative, super involved, hands-on. Can see the macro without losing sight of the pieces. You can come to him with a problem, and he sticks with you until you solve it." He has assumed quite a bit of the superintendent's job. Doesn't have the title, but has had enormous exposure to the jobs. He has a seriousness of purpose coupled with a mind at play. It's not just about the buildings, it's about community.
And Shannon was ill that day?
Yes, I was not, I was sick that day, so I did not make it.
Okay. So, then we have...
I'm just popping out my beverages.
So then Dr. Bruno, and here's what people said about him. Self-reflection when they meet. Self-reflection when they meet, what can we do better? Understands all the diverse needs of the district. He's positive, proactive and responsive. The new elementary literacy program, he goes right in to learn it so he could support it. Culture, what's good for the students? The kids know him. Parents feel respected and heard. Strengths talking points to parents, building relationships, messages to staff. Shows up to events after hours, supports boys and girls club. The mayor said he built a bridge between the town and schools. Vito's a home run. Supporting principals, assessing their needs, knowing how to help principals acclimate. He will go to families who are reluctant, humble enough to use trusted intermediaries. A family whose student was afraid to return to school after an incident, but they met with Vito and he made them feel safe. Is lifelong learner, very passionate. He doesn't micromanage. Community driven. They talked about the charity basketball games and kindergarten kickoff. He checks up on staff who are facing difficulties such as a house, a fire or a medical issue. He's open to criticism. He's instrumental in aligning our counseling with the mass model. I'll be there. Many staff are there because of him. A child in an angry crisis was yelling, send me to jail, screaming. And a few minutes later, Vito was playing basketball with him, not talking, just bonding. He jumps right in. He will substitute for principals, will walk little kids to their car, responsive to staff. He will pull students to speak on issues. Parents are happy with him. He keeps them informed. He stays at the same level no matter who he's talking to. Good human being, always positive, doesn't micromanage.
First people we spoke to were the director of special services, assistant director of special services, interim assistant superintendent, nurse director and elementary literacy, history, social science coordinator. Vito's first question is always, how can I help? Do things get done? Yes. Understanding of different populations, he knows all the team players and stakeholders. Always in the buildings. You always know when Vito is in the building. Positive energy plus proactive, accountable. Vito is best superintendent he's worked with. Can be the face of the district, but will acknowledge when he needs to grow. Grapples with new ideas until he can speak to it and can support them. The culture under Vito, wants what's good for kids. Good at helping relieve angst over new ideas, knows how to problem solve, engage stakeholders. He always says respond, don't react. Kids know him in buildings. Connection to families, he's not afraid to have hard conversations. He builds relationships. He's constantly communicating with the community.
Wow, it's really dark. It's later, it's later. I forgot about this.
We didn't get to see Vito when he was dealing with it.
There we go.
Knock at it.
You guys did have to move around while you do this.
Okay, so the next up was the school committee members and the mayor. He's done an outstanding job. He does a weekly email. He shows up at events. Kids have respect for him. Will answer any question, will get situations resolved with positivity. If you need something, he's on it. The mayor said he built a relationship with the town. Before Vito, it was us versus them, meaning city versus school. But he helped bring people together. It's not us versus them, it's we. A weakness, he's overworked and maybe he could delegate better. He was not a finalist for the West Springfield superintendent job. The mayor and the school committee believed it was a political decision and certain people wanted to go in a new direction. He knows kids, takes a lot of pride in what he does. Despite his difficulties, he has stayed steady, professional, still positive after not getting interviewed at the superintendent job. Then we had five principals came. I really wish Vito had become our superintendent. His staff has respect for him. Very responsive to parent issues. Involved in the opening of the new building. He helped in every way, helped teachers set up classrooms. He's positive, he doesn't get ruffled when things go wrong. He will meet with families, very charismatic, humble, humble enough to be trusted by intermediaries when they need him. DEI, he's the quarterback. He works with everyone. Questions about what went wrong around the superintendent position in West Springfield. This came up again and again, so we'll refer to it. These principals genuinely don't know what happened. They are asking the same question. A possible growth area or weakness, he's too compassionate. He wants to fix everything. He's not afraid of difficult conversations. He's not afraid to speak to the media. Teachers feel supported, lots of email communication, positive. The IT director. Vito is always supportive of central IT, has some things to learn as superintendent. Tries to make a lot of people happy because vying for a job is people pleasing. Good at being a team with her, with this IT director, especially on budget issues. Works on making bridges between town and school. Helps parents with tech, lots of new digitally based curriculum. Good about supporting new tech initiatives, supports teachers getting implemented. A possible weakness, he has potential, but he needs more time. He's good if he's around a lot of great people, but hasn't helped others get better. Hasn't, hasn't had a chance to get rid of chaos. Business manager was the next person in. He was hired by Vito. Vito's passion is unbelievable enthusiasm. He's a large personality, big benefit to the community, definitely capable of doing the job. Leaves decisions to others, says yes to everything, it can be good and bad. He's not necessarily financially literate. He can make decisions, but might need his budget officer next to him. He can talk about and articulate the budget better than other superintendents he's worked with. He has familiarity with East Hampton and that will help him. He asks a lot of questions. He wants to know and it challenges us. HR generalist was next, along with the administrative assistant. Vito is community driven. The kindergarten kickoff event was a new thing. Vito was part of the team that did that. Lots of turnover in the district, central office, approachable, responsive, meets with families, participates in PD, is a presence in the schools. Principals are comfortable with him. This is what he wants to do. The administrative assistant said, I feel valued and respected. He values my opinion. Regardless of your role, your opinion matters. Teachers, we had high school, high school and elementary teachers. Our district is making a big mistake, meaning letting him go. How much he cares about the community, open to criticism and feedback, never blindsided by protocols, comes right down to the kid level. He's supportive, listens, responds. You know when he's in the building, but you're not scared he's in the building. Supportive, not only professionally, but in life, checks in on families. He likes to see teachers and kids. He wants to join in. The president of the union said, if I didn't have Vito, I don't think I would have made it through the pandemic. A kindergarten teacher said, passionate, you know, you know when he's there. He helps set up expectations for their school, jumps in and helps whenever he can, very responsive to staff. What happened? Why no interview? The search was not handled professionally or correctly. Professional courtesy did not happen. An accusation that a school committee member in West Springfield had a personal vendetta perhaps, and that was the rumor. Teachers are dissatisfied with the school committee because of how Vito was treated. The issue had nothing to do with grievances. Even though he didn't get an interview, he's still 100% doing his job. He is someone you want to work for. Parents came in next. Vito responded to a parent directly about a bullying situation. He went above and beyond. The parent felt that they weren't getting help. Vito stepped in and he helped. It's a massive loss for Westside, a leader, a communicator, approachable. Parent thinks the reason he didn't get an interview, quote, "The district is looking for an outside perspective." Vito is great about having students take ownership. He brought big issues down to the students to get their perspectives on it. He wants to empower subordinates. It's going to be such an empty void for the town. He remembers you, everyone matters, helps with self-esteem. Possible weakness, too nice. Sometimes you just need a decision maker. Then we had the family liaison, SEL director, attendant supervisor. We depend on him for big and small decisions. He was not given a chance. Vito is not looking for any other superintendent positions, just East Hampton. Makes a point of spending the most time in the schools with the most difficult situations. He's always thinking, who are the stakeholders? His is a team approach, always aware of who needs to be involved. Pushing an initiative called Crosswalking. It's an effort to break out of silos and get people across communities working together. He keeps conversations going, keeps reflecting on questions and concerns. Everyone in his realm is important.
Okay, I'm just going to read through my notes again. Self-reflection, what can we do better? Understands all populations within the district. Positive, proactive, responsive. Culture, what's the best for the students, the teachers and the community? Respects the process. He's very reflective. Not afraid to have hard conversation. Gives everyone the opportunity to be heard. The weekly roundup. The weekly email to all staff and school committee members with updates. Building relationships with students, staff and community. He makes himself available to everyone. He has an open door policy. Has earned respect throughout the community. He's a lifelong learner, does not micromanage, but will give support when needed. Everyone is important. He's articulate, personable, approachable, community driven, very involved. Everyone knows who he is. You know he's in the building. He has a big personality. Walks the walk, doesn't just talk the talk. He's passionate. He's a hands-on manager. He's a strong leader. His expectations are clear. Will help anyone with anything. He has a huge heart. Approachable to students and families 100%. Contributes to conversations. Everyone's opinion matters. His biggest weakness is a huge heart. I have a lot of notes that I had taken in regards to his current situation as the interim superintendent. It sounded like it was a lot of politics that was going on. There were very interesting conversations to be had. Why was he not given the opportunity to become the superintendent of West Springfield Schools? Obviously, we were not given the full story without coming out and asking the question. Most folks were devastated to hear that he was not given the opportunity to serve as the next superintendent in Westside. The general consensus was that they made a huge mistake, but Vito has a great attitude about the situation and keeps on going. And giving his all, given the circumstances. Nothing has changed for him. He's a classy guy. We would be lucky to have him. He was a huge asset to the community and will be sadly missed by many.
Okay, so those are our site notes and. So now, what I'd like to do is open this session up to public speak. So we're actually not too late, which is good. And I got to see a ton of people, so I think a two or three minute time limit would be sufficient. So anybody who'd like to come up now and let us know what you're thinking, please do so, say who you are and keep it to two to three minutes, please.
Hi. Thank you, Mother Chair. Thank you, Mother Mayor. Thank you, school committee members for the opportunity to talk. I was going to repeat a few things from a few finalists, starting with Dr. Perron. When he said that was intense, that was long. Thank you for making it intense because this position is intense. And kids that are coming to school, they have intense life. A bunch of them are suffering. A bunch of them, they are not here and they need someone that can hear them. I hear that most of the finalists, all three finalists can have difficult conversations. That's great. But it's not about the conversations. It was what came after the conversations. Who's fair? Who's making the fair statements in process to listen both sides of the story? We don't need another superintendent who go to tandem and grab food and run away from people. We need a superintendent that is engaged with the community. We need, we need a superintendent that can hear both sides of the story and only one and then make decisions based on one side of the story. So you guys have a tough decision to make. It's not easy. In base of the notes, sound like all three candidates are amazing, are great. But you guys spend time in the schools. You can hear all the stories. You can go up to their website and find out more stories about the candidates. The only thing that I will ask as a city council president, as a resident of East Hampton, is make the right decision. We need it. Our students need it. Our community need it. It's time to have someone in their office that the doors are open. That they can go both ways, not just waiting for people to go there and tell them what is wrong. It's time for someone in their office to get out and find out what is wrong and fix it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd also like to thank all of you for the work that you put in and making this decision and for the members of the search committee. My name's Jeff Seeland. And I have a retired educator in East Hampton. I spent my career working here. I have no doubt that all three of these candidates are quality educators. If they weren't, they wouldn't have made it through that first level of the search committee and been recommended to you for your decision. My experience going back, the first superintendent that hired me as an administrator was Neil Peppin. And my experience throughout several superintendents has always been that it's a superintendent that knows and has experience with supervising people, with supervising staff, whether that be, whether that be their administrative team, helping them to work with teachers, or whether it be working on contract negotiations, working with other departments within the city in terms of limited resources. Those are all of things, those are all of the things that when I think back to the number of superintendents that I worked under, the quality superintendents were those that were able to work with people, to talk to people and to talk to large groups of people and had experience supervising staff. It's not something that the first time that you get hit with that challenge that you never saw coming, you don't have time to sidestep it. Because teachers are wonderful people. I know that there were several people on the committee who are teachers. Teachers will walk through fire for a leader that they believe in. And they will make great change to a district for a leader that they believe in. A proven leader coming our way is something that I encourage all of you to take into account as you make your, as you make your decision. That's experience that you can't find in a textbook. That's experience that you can't get from attending seminars. That's experience that you get through, as I've heard mentioned, walking the walk and talking the talk. Also, I heard when Vito was asked a question about the role of the superintendent, the first words that came to my mind were, you're the face of the school department. You have to be the one out there that when people see you, they know that you're there for them, they know that you're going to do the right thing and that even if they don't agree with that decision, they know that you're making the best decision for this community and for our school district. So as you mull through the three candidates, I want you to think about which candidate do you think would be best at bringing that to the school district? Because I, that's what it has to come down to, I think. Then I think at one point somebody mentioned, it actually was about Vito, that he was in fact the face of the school, of the school department. That's really what you're looking for. And that's what the staff wants, that's what the administrators want, that's what parents want, and most importantly, most importantly, that's what kids want. They want to know that's a person who was there, cared. They want to know that the person who was there cares about them and about their education and their future. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jeff.
Evan Zimer. I think it's important for us to acknowledge that we don't have all the information that you have, that you have confidential information, that people have sent you about what they know and the relationships they have, and that we only have an interview, which is a certain kind of public performance, that is not actually doing the job, right? So I just want to share some things I noticed, but I want to share them with the trust that I have in you evaluating all the data that you have. In my experience tonight, Dr. Perron was the weakest candidate. The weakest candidate for a few reasons. Special education is really important, and it's important to have a superintendent who understands it. I'm not criticizing Sarah, Sarah knows this, but Sarah is not supervising and managing the district. And we have some challenges in this district that need attention. The second area in which he was weakest in is the speaking about diversity, equity and inclusion. We need a leader who can inspire, can say the words, can lead. That's where this town is going and it's what we need. And when the person at the top can say that, it makes a huge difference, and the other two candidates were much stronger in that area. The other two candidates were stronger thinking in systems. But I don't know, it's just an interview. My other concern is I don't actually think the previous experience is the strength that everybody says it is. Yes, there are people who love him, but I have also spoken to people who don't. When you come in with that past baggage, I think it really makes it hard to move forward as a district. And I think that we are not the district we were eight years ago. You went through a major thing in this high school with diversity, equity, inclusion. Since he left, we are in a different place. And I heard more new visions and forward motion from the other two candidates. And they would come in with fresh eyes. When I asked him a question tonight, he started with, well, I haven't been here in eight years. I want someone who's fresh, fresh, and has starting new relationships, is not bringing in old baggage and is thinking forward. But you may know things about the other two candidates that make you say, well Evan, that might be true, but he is the best candidate that we have, and I trust that you will make the decisions. If you do pick him, I hope you work hard to find that new thing and to mitigate the past baggage, because I think they may be significant.
Um, so I went to East Hampton Schools K through 12, I'm currently 23. I can tell you that Dr. Perron was my principal my first two years at EHS. And I had never had an administrator care so much about me and my peers as he did. I had a tough two years mentally, and the reason I came to school every day in high school was because he was at that door greeting me every day, "Good morning Samantha." He made me want to come to school. And I was actually class of 2016, or 2017. And we were the class that had the problem, the diversity, inclusion, equity problem that you were just mentioning. It was my class. And before things broke out and there was a fight, which unfortunately there was outside of the school, I actually reached out to Dr. Perron to ask for his advice and for his help, and he was there for me. And my class, I, we wanted him to speak at our graduation because he was there for us when we weren't felt heard by other administrators, and so our administrators that we had at the time. So we wanted him to speak at our graduation, and his son Tyler was graduating on Friday, as he talked about in the interview. So he said, he couldn't speak on Friday because his son's graduation was on Friday. So we said, we'll change it to Saturday. So we had to get 100 votes out of 170 to change it. So we went through the signatures because everyone wanted him there, and we got 103 signatures to change it to Saturday. So he would be there. And his speech was everything we needed to leave East Hampton High School. So, just wanted you to hear that. And I'm currently a teacher in East Hampton and circles around, and yeah.
Thank you, Sam.
Anybody else? All right. Any twice? Okay, we're going to close for the speak. So now, we need to discuss our three candidates. And what I think I'd like to do is if each person could say what they found the strongest, with whatever impressions, whatever you want to say about a particular candidate. And then maybe we have some discussions around that. Does that feel comfortable?
Are we going candidate by candidate, or do you want to just have?
I'm flexible. Whatever's comfortable with everybody in terms of. Do we want to do one candidate at a time? Or do we want just everybody discusses their feeling at a time? Madam Chair, we follow your lead. Okay, fine. So then I'll make the decision. Okay, what I'd like to hear from everybody is your impressions with all three candidates. And then I think once we put those impressions on the table, we have some discussions, and then someone will put forward a motion. So why don't we start with Mary? I'm looking at you, so we might as well start with you.
I think before I make comments about the three candidates, I would take a step back even before we go there. Because I think that also, for me, it's also, it's not just three candidates in a bag. We're also a school district that has gone through a lot of different pieces, parts and learnings, and it's about where we are right now and what we need. So we're trying to match a candidate that fits our needs right now. And I think one of the places, the sort of three things that come most to mind about where we are and what's going to get us, and ultimately our students and our community to the next level. The first thing, I think, is integrations. We're doing a lot of work with our new school. We're doing, ready to take the diversity, equity and inclusion work to the next level. And it's about integrating all those different pieces deeper embedded into our culture and where we're at. And the next piece of that too, really comes around empowering our students. We need to take, we need to find ways to make them, we've talked about this, but we need to make sure that our students are the center of what we're working on. And I think that's another piece of what we're looking at building as we move forward. And then finally, I think at the same time that we're doing that, it also needs to be that we need to continue to work on and understand how do we build bridges with our community and reach out at the same time that we're looking at. So then, for me, that's part of the framework that I'm thinking about as I'm looking at these three candidates. I think all three candidates are strong in their own different ways. And so, these are some of the thoughts that I have on each of those candidates. Dr. Bruno, I think, deeply cares about the work. As he said, he's a public servant, and I believe very strongly that he follows that with the deepest level of integrity. He's calm, collected. I believe that his anti-racist educator perspective and trust building is core to him. And that he really recognizes and reflects on his mistakes. Dr. Stark brings a broad skill set, a lot of central office work, a strong administrator and manager. And as she mentioned, an adaptive learner that really is a system thinker, and he does a lot of her strengths. Dr. Perron, I think, is a significant collaborator, a bridge builder, somebody who has a growth mindset and will bring that to our district. I think his spark, his excitement, his student-focused attention is really strong. And the number of times that he kept bringing it back to, this is not about me, this is about us. And again, that's that collaboration at seeing, how can we bring everybody together to take the work to the next level? So those are my thoughts on what we can.
It's hard to follow him and his, he's always so calm and articulate and you keep your passion to a straight where I'm the complete opposite. It's very hard for me to even begin to discuss the three candidates with you because I have a different perspective from anyone in this room. Well, no, I can't say that because there are faculty members who worked with Dr. Vito Perron. I would like to say something I've said many, many times to you. The reason I'm a school committee member is because I am passionate about public education. I am passionate about diversity, equity and inclusion. I assumed this role without knowing the things we would face during COVID. I'm so fortunate to have the colleagues I have sitting with me at this table. And I always respect all of their opinions. And I think the hardest thing for me last night, when I woke up at 3:00 AM, it was funny, Dr. Perron said that. I woke up at 3:00 AM because I knew we would not all be in agreement this evening and we would have hard conversations. But I would like to say that I never imagined that I would be interviewing somebody that was my evaluating principal. I have had, I tried to count so I could tell you, but I didn't even like come to a number because I have been an educator for over 35 years. I have worked with dozens of administrators in both public schools and private schools. I've worked with superintendents, headmasters, vice principals, the list would go on. I can tell you in all honesty, I have never had as much respect in any of them as I have for Dr. Vito Perron. And I, and I say that not because I'm going to gain anything personally. I tell you that because I want to do what's best for East Hampton. I was thrilled to have three candidates put before us that would give us this difficult decision because all three of them would do a phenomenal job here. But it's hard for everybody here to know what we have received in emails. And even today, I received a phone call and had to ask for an email to be sent. I think it's all public information and I can give some quotes. Is that true, Madam Chair? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm following the rules because I am a rule follower. Over a month ago, we received a lengthy email by three of our most valued educators in this district. Those three educators were Kelly Brown, Jared Born and Rose Guerra. And it was a very long email in complete support for Dr. Vito Perron. And I just want to give the last paragraph because we don't have time. But I want you to understand that it's not just my personal experience with him. I have been very careful to listen to our educators here in East Hampton because I value our educators here so much. In the end of this letter where they gave detailed information about why they support him to become the superintendent, they ended by saying, together, the three of us have over 60 years of combined experience in the East Hampton Public Schools. In that time, we have all served on many hiring committees. The candidates we interview for positions in East Hampton always want to be a teacher or a principal or a superintendent. Maybe for a first job or a stepping stone, but almost never do we get a candidate that truly and solely wants to be East Hampton's teacher, principal or superintendent. We have all witnessed many people who wish for a position, but Dr. Perron wants this position. He wants to be East Hampton Superintendent. Vito knows this community. He knows its values, its challenges and its strengths. We are confident that he will continue to make East Hampton Public Schools a great place to learn and grow. From three people who have dedicated our hearts, minds and careers to this amazing city, we want a leader that wants to be East Hampton Superintendent, and that leader is Dr. Vito Perron. I can tell you that I work, as it's very evident, at West Springfield High School. When the high school found out that he was not among the three finalists, a significant number wore black in mourning. I have had people come to me left and right throughout my day. We got two lengthy emails from the guidance department at West Springfield High School supporting Vito because he is so committed. And his four Cs are not just a thing, okay, that he lives and breathes. I have witnessed it personally. So I really appreciate Mr. Seelandor coming here because I've heard a lot about you and I don't know if I've ever had the pleasure of meeting you. But the things that you said that make a good leader, that make a good superintendent with your personal experience, that's what I have felt. And I would never suggest anybody for East Hampton if I didn't feel that person wasn't that leader to be the face. And to meet Samantha Garcia, we went through horrific experiences here in East Hampton. And to have her explain what it was like to be greeted by him every day, to make her day easier, going through the turmoil that our students went through, that to me is more than enough to hear. But I want to say again, this is getting very lengthy, my passion comes out. I value the three candidates that came. I know that Dr. Erica Faginsky Stark, I hope I'm saying her name right. I know she said it with a wonderful accent last night, that she has amazing experience with her curriculum, she talked a lot about special education, as did Dr. Bruno with, I believe, 17 years of special education experience. But I also value what one of our community members said tonight, that Evan didn't feel that Dr. Perron had that type of experience. But on the other hand, I have seen him work in a school with many students with significant needs. If that didn't come across in his meeting here today, I can attest that I have taught the students with significant social emotional needs. We in West Springfield are the number one most diverse student population per capita in the whole state, number four in the whole country. So to have him with that experience here in our community can be extremely helpful as well. So I could keep on going on, but I'm going to allow someone else to speak now. Thank you.
Thanks. Megan?
Thank you both for those thoughts. I come to school committee in the new cohort of committee members, which I think brings a different perspective. I don't, I was not here in the district and part of school committee when he was a principal here. I, these three candidates are fresh to me. My first, my first experience with them was their application materials. And then a building from that point on of the interactions that they have had during site visits and recommendations, notes from the search committee, notes from the references that were called by members of the search committee before they put forward three candidates, the interview here, and then feedback from the community. So that, that is what I can base my opinion on for all three candidates. And I think, you know, it's complex and I feel, you know, if I didn't wake up at 3:00 AM, thank goodness, because. I didn't wake up at 3:00 AM, thank goodness, because I think it's asleep, it's asleep. But I also understand that this is going to be a challenging conversation. I think it's it's I think we're in a good position. I think we will end up with a superintendent of this district who will serve us well. I think we will discuss together and come to our best effort at what is the best match. But I think we have we have good options. And I appreciated a comment from a member of the community that there are things that were in the application materials that were nuanced of things that references said, all that sort of information that sort of more than than we can share here right now, not because we don't want to share but just because we have we have access to the full application. So I just wanted to say all of that because all of that is circling in my mind as well. And so thinking through the candidates in the order in which we saw the interviews, we first saw Jonathan Bruno here. And my overall impression is that this candidate has incredible passion and idealism, a clear commitment to diversity and anti-racist education. He was very approachable and the entirety of the package from this candidate, I think there are a lot of strengths, particularly around special education. But I'm not convinced about the amount of experience and if that's a great fit for where we are right here, right now, what we need going forward. Last night, we had Dr. Erica Faginski Stark, who I, again, in the in the totality of that application, I am impressed by the depth and breadth of the expertise and experience. This candidate has a lot of expertise and training and research and certifications and experience working at high-level admin-type positions and that that a superintendent of a small school district needs to have. I really appreciated that. I also think, given where East Hampton is right now and the particular issues that we are facing, the particular issues that parents have talked to us about over and over again, communication and transparency and budget-related issues, I found Dr. Faginski Stark incredibly strong on those particular issues. I was impressed by her budget answer and process. And and that was reflected, not just in what she said here, but in the references that were called in the site visit comments, in her track record of getting grant funding. So that that to me felt like a big strength. And then tonight, we had the pleasure of interviewing Dr. Vito Peron, who I think it's immediately obvious that his passion and enthusiasm for education and for children and for students is enormous. It doesn't seem like there is a bottom to that now. And, you know, in the totality of that application package and that candidate's package, so thinking about the answers to some of the questions that were asked in the initial application and thinking about what the references that he selected to have called by the committee and what answers they gave and the answers and sort of feedback that we got here. I saw less evidence in those answers of specific actions, steps. I thought I had I have a conglomerate of data from, you know, from another candidate who I see specific actions, here's how it happened, here's what happened, rather than sort of enthusiastic passion. That is not to discount any of the passion. I think that's a really strong part of his application. Let me say, there's one thing else I wanted to say and I'm trying to think now what it was. The one thing I wanted to come back to is, so again, coming into this fresh, I have the interviews, I have the materials submitted and the comments from site visits, and I have information received from the community. And there's been a really interesting pattern of communication from our community about these three that I have noticed pretty strongly. There has been a lot of early, strong support for Vito Peron, notably from administrators and educators in the district and people with experience in education. And I think that's important to acknowledge that there are people who are working in this field who who were quick to send us information and feedback. There has been some incoming information from community members, you know, particularly in the last four days about all the candidates, but the the strongest reaction in the past four days by far has been for Dr. Erica Faginski Stark. The emails and the conversations that I personally, I cannot speak for my colleagues, that I personally have received and people who have approached me is orders of magnitude larger, multiple times what I have received for either of the other two at this point. So I think that's in in the last four days. I think that's an important thing to note, too. This is as our community is watching these interviews, which is the part that they have access to. That is the feedback I'm I'm hearing from the community. And now I've managed to go on for a really long time, too.
No, you didn't.
But.
We're all doing fine.
I'm getting a pause.
I just need to make a clarification statement, something that Megan said. You did not receive notes from the search committee. The notes that you received were from the reference checks. I was wondering from the reference checks. I'm only saying that because the search committee information is confidential.
Correct.
I don't want them to think that it was.
Correct. Thank you for reciting. I saw information from the search committee. They're notes from when they called references, correct?
When she called references.
Okay, so nothing from the search committee. Thank you for the clarification. The notes I saw from reference checks were written.
I took reference checks.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
It changes everything.
It changes everything. It's important. It's important.
It is very important because.
It's an important part of the process that they know that what they said was kept confidential. I did not see your notes, search committee.
Okay, so Shannon?
I'm not ready.
Ben?
Okay, well, this process has been incredible in terms of its, for me, educating me on how public education works. The packets were thorough and it was really great to be introduced to these people through the packets. And then I had the pleasure of going to the three sites. And it was really an amazing thing to see the way they set up the day. I felt like we were treated really well and we got to get a really kind of bright window into the way these districts are running and incredible experience. And I'm grateful for that. And if they're listening to this, thank you for that effort and that work. That was that was important. I mean, I think basically I want to walk through the three candidates pretty simply. And I'll talk about one, I guess. Bruno, this Dr. Bruno for sure had a fluency with D E I language that was inspiring. He had a way about him that exuded confidence and, you know, down-to-earth. You could speak to him and it would be great to hang out with him. But I felt a little worried about the experience factor there. There was a lot of great language, a great presentation of what might happen, but I didn't feel like there was enough backup with actual experience that we could like look at and reflect on. I I sometimes felt that way at the site visits as well, that these people liked him, but they weren't quite able to offer concrete evidence that this is somebody who can run the big picture. And so, you know, it it's I think after his interview, it was a great interview for all intents and purposes, but I kind of had the feeling like I would like to him, for him to come back in five, ten, twelve years after he's really had a bunch of years to work on this, to work on his his skills. And I think he'll be a force down the road. His special education answer was spectacular, I thought. It really was perhaps one of the high points of these three interviews. And it spoke to the fact that we really need a serious attention to that, like specific attention to that with details and clarity. And I felt good about that. But yeah, so I wanted I wanted a little more in terms of experience for sure. So Dr. Faginski Stark, I think that there is an experience. For for me, those two nights really were big and bright in terms of Dr. Bruno versus Faginski Stark's experience. I think Faginski Stark's experience was so pronounced that she immediately became a much more potent person for this position. The site visit also illuminated for me that sometimes what you see doesn't necessarily, what you see in terms of like the professionalism isn't all there is. And I think it can be deceiving sometimes when you you get kind of like intimidated. And one of the things that came up a lot with people at in Lovlo was that she is, she she's sort of fearless and a hard worker and will sort of stop at nothing to get things done. I was really impressed by the concrete details she could offer in her answers to questions. Clearly, this is somebody who has lived this position. She's walked the walk in a way that she could articulate. And as a person, Evan said in the public speak, sometimes this is a public performance and it's who can perform the best that gets the gig. But I felt like her 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 ability to communicate professionally was met with a kind of like warmth that was within. I think it might be a little bit challenging for us to help her bring that out. But I felt hopeful that there was a potential there, that she has a professionalism that we could work with. And it matters when you're talking about what do we need as a district. I want someone who is comfortable with the minutia of every element of our whole situation. And I felt like this is somebody who could, you know, she talked about like reciting civil rights laws. You know, she she it felt like she knows the rule books in and out. And and one thing we heard again and again is if she doesn't know an answer, she will find the answer. There was people who said like, like, one thing I'd really like is for for her not to email me at three in the morning because she just works all the time. And it's both a good and a bad thing. It's kind of like amazing, but also like settle down kind of, like take care of yourself. But it it gave me a good impression that this is somebody who could pick up the reins. Like, for instance, I just think that her she could do kind of the managerial kind of work that our president should pretend it can do, but perhaps extend into the community with much more focus and intention and be a bit more of a presence that we could actually connect with and build relationships with. Because for all intents and purposes, she seemed like somebody who could really build relationships. And then Dr. Vito Peron, it was like a spectacular Disney World experience in my mind because it was like there was so much energy and so much enthusiasm. And I felt like there were times he said things I've I've actually spoken the same things about, specifically about standardized testing, which was unbelievable to hear someone speak like that. And then, like, both tonight and at our site visit, he was incredible at talking. The the picture of him as an incredibly enthusiastic, thoughtful, bridge-building person, person who was unbelievably focused on the well-being of children. I mean, this was, I mean, you can't not be inspired by that. There was a moment at the site visit where someone talked about how the admin was talking, were wrestling over a big problem and Vito took the problem to a classroom of children and asked them what they thought about it. And that just like blew my mind. Like, the idea that people would actually make that idea, like bringing kids in and asking them. Very, very impressive. So my brain had to do some gymnastics here because on on one hand, I am moved by his presentation and his ability to talk about what he does. On the other hand, I'm concerned that there was a lot of, like, my hair was blowing back with the beauty. And I wasn't feeling like I need I need some concrete details here. I need some statistics. I want some more information about how things actually worked. I love that he was able to say, you know, it's still a little clunky. We're going to try it again. We're going to try it again. And it's like, yes, absolutely. But also, well, what's actually happening? How are you measuring your success? Like, I think about the question there you said a while ago. I think about this all the time. How do you know when you've done a good job? And I don't know that he really showed that. And I was, that was a concern I had coming away from this was that he's super enthusiastic. He will meet you, meet everybody, make everybody feel comfortable. But what's actually happening? And I have to say that the experience at the at the site visit was very complicated. It was it was confusing. It was it was difficult to justify or resolve the contradiction between why this amazing human being didn't get that next step. And also that he only applied here when there was like fourteen or fifteen positions around the state that he could have applied for. These questions were on my mind. They didn't, they weren't, they weren't resolved. So I I struggled with that, too. So in the end, yeah, I feel like I want the person who is willing to take on, tackle all aspects of this of the district, but hopefully someone who has pretty significant experience in all those aspects of the district. And if they don't, who I feel confident a group of motivated parents say could go to this person and say, here's what we think would be really helpful. Or somebody who would make all faculty feel welcomed and comfortable and that 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 this person could help the district grow in that way. So I'm feeling like this is really challenging and it's a brutal decision. I feel I feel like this is like one of the hardest things ever done. But yeah, moving in the direction, I think, of Faginski Stark.
Me and?
Amanda, or do you want to go?
I really don't want to talk.
Okay, that's great.
Sure. A lot of people feel or wish I said that more, but it's not gonna happen. So I, one, I thought all three of the candidates were passionate within their field, about their field. They all had notable accomplishments within public education, whether they were going into leadership or not. I was really impressed and enjoyed meeting with each one of them. And for Dr. Bruno, I really appreciated his perception, his perspective. But I feel like he's still building the supervision and oversight skills for a whole district in a superintendent position. I think he's going to get there. I think he's not yet ready. But when I think about East Hampton Public School Department and the different facets of any school district, but what's going on for our school district, I just didn't, I don't feel he was at that, he's at that level to take on that supervision and kind of oversight and drive it all forward. With Dr. Stark, the credentials were very impressive and even more so was the experience and implementation. A lot of what Ben just saw really resonated with me around the details and and the way the doctor could connect it to the whole of the school operations. I also thought she was extremely genuine with her her kid, student, teacher kind of connection and how she can get right down there with the littlest kids or oldest kids and work through stuff with them and their families. The her command of different assessments that could be used to check if something is working or I thought even more impressive of where we could capture baselines in this day and age were really stood out in my in my mind. You know, she the the she described, you know, with the budget and IT, the details were really very minute. And I love the term she had budget scrub or scrub the budget. I wrote that down five times. So that's where I am. And Dr. Peron, you know, I struggled too with a little bit. I'm so glad, Ben, you went right before me. It's helping. The I didn't feel wind in my hair, but I did feel.
I did.
Yeah, yeah, I love that.
That was real.
Yeah, that was good. I think Dr. Peron is. Yeah, that was good. Um, I, I, I think Dr. Perone is as qualified as Dr. Stark for this position. I think in their professional continuum, they're both ready to take this spot in in a size of our district and whatnot. Um, the, the thing from a mayor perspective, and this is how it'll come down for me, is one, the, yes, the early local support kind of made me like irritated. Um, but the fact that that early local support is almost the same as the support in West Springfield was stunning. And I am a superintendent and a spread director, Ben is principal, and I've taught history. And that is what kind of made me think, well, why? And um, and one of his, and our lawyers would would chastise me and not be very happy if I did what the West Springfield mayor did, which is he wrote a personal letter of recommendation based on his professional uh experience with Dr. Perone. And that changed me for that and what, what for my thinking of it, you know, the approach, um, the way he looks at what resource can be brought together, um, I feel like it's what we need now. Um, you know, we need coaching and trust and, and that kind of unique catalytic kind of leader. Um, I don't, you know, I call it the special stuff, call it whatever, but we don't have our special stuff anymore. Um, and Dr. Perone uh checks the boxes for me, which I'll honest, didn't think it would go that way, but it's pretty clear for me. I mean, really appreciate Dr. Stark um in in a heartbeat. But I, I think, and I've said this, I I was um, I I got to meet with each candidate for thirty minutes. And um, I I basically said a version of each one. I was, I was just like, look, I think that the next superintendent of of this school department needs to be like it's twenty seventeen and I got elected and everything is possible. And you have the gumption that's like, can you see that for, because I'm very afraid about the next superintendent even being from three. I mean, do you hear they wanna stay like three years? We're gonna miss a lot of stuff. This is, this is where we slip it up. This is, this is where we have great schools and we have housing coming on and we don't have special stuff that people can trust our schools. We're in a deficit of trust and I, I feel Dr. Perone will do that, has the best chance of doing it.
Next.
Okay, I'm sorry. I will say something, but I I'm really tired. And when I talk, when I'm tired, I don't talk very well, so excuse me, please. Um, this has been an amazing process to be a part of. Um, I've really enjoyed, you know, meeting all the candidates and going to their districts. I mean, I know I didn't get to go see um, John, but I really feel passionate about how Dr. Perone has presented himself. And I'm, I've known him for years. My daughter's graduated with him at EHS. You know, it's, we have a good relationship. And I think that he's what this city needs. And I've said that many times as far as a leader in the community of the school and someone that's really gonna stand up and be our cheerleader, the face of the district. And that's what we need. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, um, okay, so Mia, I'll share my thoughts. Okay, three really strong candidates. I will tell you that one of the, there's a number of things I'm really looking for. Um, there are many people who feel that they aren't really welcome in our district. I'd like them to feel that way. I want them to feel more included. But I think that there hasn't been the outreach that I would like to see to make people feel included. So that's very big for me. And what is also big for me is someone, I'm really looking for someone who will come out of their office into the buildings, talking to people, talking to staff, cheering them on, yes, but having ideas. To me, leadership in our district has to be about having ideas and solutions and answers. So um, my experience when I went to see Dr. Bruno, um, I thought, great person. Um, I really resonate. I'm a special ed teacher. And it's very, very clear that he has some very excellent dramatic ideas and commitments to special ed. Um, so it was really nice to hear, but I also heard from the district, from people that he knows how to bring people who are feeling left out into the district, into our, our offices so that they feel that they have a voice. And that's really important for me. I I I can't look at, I've I've gone through all this. I have not seen any answer that stood out to me as not measuring, not not having the information that I want. So I feel really comfortable. If Dr. Bruno was our superintendent, I think we'd be in good hands. I think all three candidates, great. Dr. Erica Figinsky Stark, though, is someone who has a thousand answers, a thousand ideas and has, can tell you very specifically, here's the problem. These are the four or five things I would think about to develop a plan. And so when I've written down all the different programs, the different ideas, um, this person has done, brings money into the system, has started programs to better curriculum, started programs to help, I I mean, the family engagement. We've often not had good marks on family engagement. And that's something we need to change. People have to have a voice. And when I was in the district, but also when I'm listening to her, I believe that Dr. Figinsky Stark would give families a voice, all families. Those families, I can't speak enough. I wish I had had a tape with this family from Puerto Rico and how magical it was to feel that they had not only been welcomed, but helped and that they found their voice. That meant a lot to me. I'd love to hear that in the district every day. And I think that with this particular person, that's the kind of behavior. Over and over, we heard stories. If you won't come to her, she's gonna go to you. She's gonna go to your home and show up and make sure that you feel comfortable. But what I liked also, again, is idea after idea after idea. We have a problem, I've got these ideas. We have another problem, I'm going to come at it in a different way. And each, I'm looking at my notes, we're talking about coming together, understanding. And that was another thing that I, I can't even remember at this point if I put it in my notes. But everybody said she will listen to you and she'll work out an answer with you. And I really want a leader for this district who has awesome ideas, but knows how to implement them by getting everybody on board and taking their ideas and listening to those. And that was the impression that I got here. So um, again, it was really, it was a fun day for for both of us. Dr. Perone, um, the visit that we had, it left me wanting. I think that Dr. Perone is an incredibly wonderful person. And I'm sure as a principal and a teacher and an instructor, um, probably absolutely fantastic. And we've gotten so many emails from people saying how great a person he is. But what I didn't hear on my visit was answers to problems. What I did not hear is ideas that were original, creative and responsive to the needs of our community. And that's what I was really hoping for. And the same thing happened tonight. I have no doubt that Dr. Perone will support people and that Dr. Perone will, you know, reach out to students and teachers and administrators. But for a number of questions as we went through, I wish there was an idea, a specific idea. Tell me how you're gonna make that happen. Don't just talk to me about, you know, um, polarized opinion. Give me ideas as to how to make it better. Don't just talk about, you know, diversity and equity. Give me some specifics as to how you're going to make it better. So often in my notes, there's just a wanting for more information. I think that he's very well-liked and I think he's very personable. But when it comes to people who have real ideas, that's what we need in a leader. You can't just be a leader that supports everybody and it's wonderful to let people soar. But if we're, if we're missing a direction, if we have a problem and we need to conquer that problem, I need a leader who's got a hundred ideas in their pocket. And that's what I see in Dr. Erica Figinsky Stark. Someone who has so many ideas and they're not all firsts. There are ones that she got from listening to people that she pays attention and is able to apply those to the solving of problems. We have, being a superintendent is more than just um, being a wonderful person and being really good at understanding education and being committed with the kids. All three of these candidates feel that way. All three of our candidates care about the kids. They care about staff. There was so clear staff, working as a team. But I really want the answers and I want someone who can go out and be a powerhouse in the community and bring all the marginalized people into the community and give them a voice. And all the different stresses that we have in this district, all districts have stresses. I want somebody who comes in with answers. So for me, it's Dr. Erica Figinsky Stark.
Can I respond to what you say? Cause you know I value everything that you say. But once again, because I'm in the district where Dr. Perone works, I've seen these answers. I've seen these solutions. I've seen him reach out to the marginalized members of our community and make them feel welcome. I mean, Samantha even gave her experience here when she was made to um, feel welcomed here. I would like to say that he does collaborate more. We, um, I read extensively, I went in with a very open mind. I read every single word of the three applications. I read every reference. I found that the recommendations for Dr. Perone were, to me, much more indicative of a leader who knows how to collaborate. I saw for Dr. Figinsky Stark that sometimes she has trouble delegating responsibility and um, isn't want to want to collaborate as much because she wants to do everything herself. So that gets me a little nervous. Um, I'd like to mention that he mentioned Dr. Tamika LaSalle, who was brought into the district. He does have ideas and he works on those ideas for diversity, inclusion and equity. And um, there's a quote, I asked if I could read it and I I can read a quote that was in the folder, correct?
In the, not in the folder.
Sue said I could. Oh, I I thought they said if it was a recommendation, we could.
We, we made it come in not to share what was in the folder. You, you have permission to share an email that you got.
Oh, I had asked you before if it was, okay, well, it was a glowing reference. She is um, an educator, a psychologist who travels throughout the country. And it was a really glowing recommendation for Dr. Perone comparing to other people she has worked with in the country. I'll paraphrase, I guess. But um, so I would like to share an email that Meredith Belize said quickly because she called me today.
We're not reading emails. You can just summarize it.
I thought you said I had to read it. That's why she wrote it. I checked with you, Sue. I said, can I say what Meredith said if she sends an email? So it's like, I just wanna follow policies. So Meredith, I'll paraphrase, Meredith called me and then sent an email in one hundred percent full support of Dr. Perone. So, and she feels that she is the administrator who has worked longest in this district and that it's important for people to know that. And she would have been here this evening to say that, but she was unable to be. So she asked me to say.
Um, just so you know, we have received other emails tonight and today, and it's mixed. Um, Dr. Perone, Dr. Bruno and Dr. Figinsky Stark. So I think one of the things that tells me is that what's going on here is things that are pretty close to each other. Um, when we're getting a variety of different emails, I think, again, it means that the search committee did a really nice job. Um, again, my, I love the fact that Dr. Perone is a collaborator. And, but I wanted ideas. I wanna hear those ideas from someone who is going to lead our community. I didn't hear those ideas when I went and I didn't hear them tonight. So I hear that he's very well-liked and that he will, you know, have connections with people. But I want ideas. I want solutions. I want creative programs. So if if he had started to, you know, talk about all the different programs and ideas for fixing problems. But as I went through this, um, with the mayor's um, question on polarized situation, it was a very important situation. But then when he was talking about, you know, the N-word in the schools, the N-word in the halls, at that point, I wanted to hear ideas as to what to do about that. And what I, what I got was, you know, the staff worked to stop the polarization, but I didn't hear how that is going to be fixed in the schools.
Can I actually speak to that?
Yep.
Do you mind? Because I, because in conversations.
No, that's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, you're you're asking something specific. And I feel like um, in the one-on-one conversations that um, I had with uh, with him today, uh, when Shannon and I were having a lunch time with him, um, he did give more details to that specific thing. Um, and that um, that the solution in there, and Shannon can add to this if you'd like, was around particularly finding students that were directly affected and empowered. They they came forward with solutions about how they wanted to engage the community. So there's a particular, I think there was one of the particular Afghan young women students that became center to speaking out for the diversity of the community. And that's what built towards what he mentioned was the wall of flags. But it was that there was a a strong student-driven solution that stepped forward and said, called out and said, no, we are not gonna have swastikas in our bathroom. We're not gonna be, you know, walking around everyone using the N-word. There, there's all these other pieces that there was like calling out, saying, this is putting attention to what we're not gonna have and putting forward the diversity, putting forward the the student-driven solutions about how the community is gonna speak out. about how the community is going to speak out for what they believe in in terms of the inclusivity that they want and how they built that. So I do think that there was very strong specifics about what they did. And to me, leadership is an interesting thing, right? Leadership, leadership can be somebody who comes forward with 1,000 answers and helps build consensus on an answer. And leadership can also be, have solutions, but also really be somebody who collaborates to get the stakeholders in the room. And I agree, there's times where he didn't necessarily articulate all of who the stakeholder was or how he might get the person in the room. But I think overall, I did find that it's about right now in this community, I don't think we need one person to say, this is my answer. I think in this community right now, we need someone who's going to bring together the stakeholders and together, you build consensus to have the answers.
I agree.
And sometimes that means not putting forward my 10,000 answers. It's about getting the right people in the room, having those conversations, and the 10,000 answers come out of that conversation so that everybody then can agree and go forward with that solution.
And I feel like that's what we talked about today. And I didn't want, no, you, you talk.
Oh, no, I was just saying, that's what, that was our conversation. That's what it was based on today.
And celebrating, celebrating the strengths and celebrating the strength of our students.
Yes.
So it's so good to have you talk because people are going to think I'm just biased to have him. But I've seen him do this. I've seen him bring the faculty together, the guidance department, the students. I have seen students, when he walks in now, because he's been out of the high school, students run to him. He will like drop everything and start shooting baskets with the kids. They have such a relationship with him and he breaks down barriers because they feel connected. And because of his eagerness to collaborate, he makes all of us want to work with him. Why, what personal goal do I have to see him become superintendent here? It's because I have seen him with people. He is a people person. He, I have gone to him so many times with issues, with problems. I've seen him around a table in a very serious situation. Parents were there, other administrators were there. I won't get into details, but I saw how he handled that solution. I saw how he always had an open door. I knew that if I had a question, I would email him, day or night. One Sunday night, no exaggeration, I emailed at 11:00 thinking he'd see it Monday morning. He emailed me back, Sunday night at 11 o'clock at night. And even when he became superintendent and I had questions for him, he answered the same way. And I was a Spanish teacher in the high school. He is always accessible. He makes you feel heard. And if he doesn't have the answer, you will find the answer and he will work it out. And I really appreciated what you said, Mayor, because I do feel that we need somebody. I was looking for your quote. The special stuff, right?
Special stuff.
Sauce, come on.
That is, that is Vito Peron. For you to recognize that the community in West Side and the teachers that are sitting in the back of the room, Sue Mason sent us an incredible email. These people with experience who have worked under different people, for them to be sitting and supporting him still, that says so much. That's what we need. He, he does have answers, he has solutions. He talked about the three pillars. He talked about, you may not have heard the anecdotes that you heard when you visited the other district. That doesn't mean that those anecdotes aren't there. We heard one right here from Samantha Garcia.
Okay, anecdotes are beautiful things and they definitely help shape the picture, for sure. I mean, just interestingly, Stark and Peron do overlap when it comes to, for instance, going to the community, going to stakeholders before making big decisions. Like, we heard that several times with, with Erica Faginsky Stark, that her goal is to make sure that people understand how they're going to be affected. So they go, she goes to talk to them, which feels, like there are things like that that have, that, that, when I heard about them, I thought, you can do that? Because I don't, because as a, as a public school parent and as school committee member, I've never experienced that. At least, that's my take on what we have now. So it was like pretty, pretty exciting to think that like there's someone who could do that and then combine that with her experience. I think, I think I want to ask a question and I did, I just, because I want to know, because it was something that really plagued me and I said to you and I kind of talked about this a little bit. When, when we were there in West Springfield, there was this black cloud hanging over the whole experience, which was, why does, why did this incredible, incredible educator, administrator not get even an interview? It's kind of an incomprehensible problem for me. I don't know what the answer, and I'm sorry, I just don't want to even hear your answer right away because I feel like you have immediate experience. I'd love to hear from people who don't know anything about this or haven't been there, but it's, there's something really missing. There's a piece missing that I can't find.
So, and I want to caution a little bit first, okay? So we want to be careful with rumor that anybody's heard about why that happened. I think Ben's really talking about is, there was a sense that there was more to the answer than just that it was political. I will say that at one point, someone in the central office said, there's a lot of chaos here and he, he hasn't been able to address it and he hasn't been able to calm it down. So I, you know, I don't know how he's going to be in another district. And this was someone talking positively about them, but they were just sharing that for the last year, there's been chaos in the office and a lot of unhappy people and he hasn't been able to change that. So I don't know what was the reason, but when we went, there was a feeling that there was just more to the answer than just that it was political. I do think personally, the search committee was weighted too heavily. There was, my personal opinion, I'm only saying that there were two school committee members on the search committee.
For West Springfield.
And, yeah, and I would not have done that because that person has a much stronger voice than, you know, anybody else.
I just, I just have maybe a process question or observation. So we have a packet and I respect the insider view of things and understanding of who was on the search committee there and experiences working with him as, as members of the committee. But we have a packet and an interview and the experiences that happened here. And I'm a little uncomfortable with, like, we don't have Erica or Jonathan having a member of their staff here advocating strongly for why they are so great. And I just, I, I feel like I need to say that because it's, I just, I feel a little uncomfortable with that, with, I, I would like to base this on applications and an interview here. And, I don't know, I just, I just, I'm really worried that we, we have baggage about various members and we, we aren't able to divorce that from what happens here in this particular application process.
I don't understand, to be honest.
Proud of it, I'm not supposed to speak anymore, but I was trying to give quotes of other people. That's what I want to do.
I just, I think that there are two other candidates who don't have a, a person who is advocating for them and that I don't have any evidence of your personal work relationship with him. And it's not that I don't value your opinion, I absolutely do, you know, I cherish you and respect you.
And I didn't want that to happen, so that's why I thought it would be okay to read from a national expert, her opinion. But then I was told, no, don't do that. You can say that, but don't say that. So I'm just trying not to make it seem like it's all me. There are so many people in this community that have reached out to us. I know it hasn't been all positive. But I'm just trying to, there aren't many circumstances where somebody who's been on a school committee for six years is, you know, has worked for the person who's applying. I know it's bizarre. I've tried to be fair about it. I've tried to ask people's opinion. I said to people in this community, if you had any negative experiences with Vito. I walked around my building and I said, please, if you have anything negative, tell me. Because I couldn't bring a distorted view here if I didn't ask for the other side. I really did ask.
We don't have someone doing that at the other schools.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Because I don't have, I don't have as much information about the other candidates.
Could we just, I really, I just wanted to return to this question of like, what do you all do with the issue of an incredible person like Vito not getting an interview? And not that we need to produce rumors or pass rumors around, but it's, it just concerns me that we would pick this person who has a track record in the district and should have been the natural, I mean, at least in theory, should have been the natural choice. So I mean, many people said, what are you doing to their, you know, people who they work with? Why are you letting him go? And I'm just.
So I call you out on that.
Please.
I mean, automatic succession within systems can still, and.
It did similar things, it does happen.
Yeah, I mean, you go for, I mean, I, I think to assume that there's a succession count, you know, why wouldn't that be the next? Also, you know, keeps interview process closed. It also dampens other people's ideas because they want to be in sync with this automatic succession. The fact that someone doesn't get an internal, like, think about the term, think the turmoil in our district and how much different it was. And I forget who was talking about, this is where we were, maybe Mark, this is where we were, this is where we are. I mean, that's, that's true of all districts.
Yeah, no, that's right.
It didn't, and as, you know, again, I, I would never be a superintendent. But I know a lot about the searches and I've, I've filled in for superintendents and it can go a million different ways. It's, it's kind of like.
For sure.
For, yeah, so I think, I think the political cloud around it is, is West Springfield's political drama and we have our own dramas. And it makes it a community position, right? That's why it's, it's such a big, every one of our candidates, I, I think that we've talked up to over the last three days, check the boxes of being competent and licensed and credentials and came with so much stuff. The, and even with, between Dr. Stark and Dr. Peron, internally certainly did the gender check. I mean, think about it. Be some of the, the notes from, you know, that you read out today from visits. She's not really approachable. She works too hard. Eh, don't know. He's a coach, he's like, there's gender bias in our own remarks and what people have written in the emails that I've gotten on, on all three. I mean, it's hard to balance it out. But, and, and of this, I hear what you're saying, Cindy, about wanting ideas and, and somebody, I think that's a particular, the leader I'm thinking about for our school district is more about who can step away from having the idea or in putting inflection into a conversation with an idea and letting things come up. I think our, I think we as a school committee have had what sat and bazillion of ideas from all levels of faculty, department heads, parents. I don't worry about lack, I, I don't worry about lack of ideas in this department at all. But what's going to coalesce, and there is, there's just a, there's a huge trust breach here. And, and that's huge for me.
Can I just comment on one of the things that I think is really important about what you just said? Is that if, we, we can't assume, why didn't we get an interview here? What happened there? However, if it's as simple as other opportunities, looking for a different direction, why, that, that doesn't explain a black cloud to me. That doesn't explain why people weren't direct about it. I think that there's.
You don't want to get sued. I'm not joking. I mean, these are people's careers.
Yeah. I just think.
What we say here now, someone could say, well, hell no, I'm not even giving that person an interview. Look at, look at the black cloud that he's standing front when they just say, does it? I mean, I'm not trying to start, but, I mean, that's why we have the packet and the credentials, we got to ask, we got to pick the questions.
Yeah.
I think it's a, it, it's a, I'm not saying it doesn't have weight, but how do you know he did or did not apply? Or Dr. Stark did or did not apply to different districts because she was told not to, or he was told not to before, vice versa.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's all fair.
I mean, I don't know how many times I hear of people ask to apply for something and the intention is really just to, to, to get more people in the hiring pool than it is maybe they really, yeah, I, I think, I, I think we just go down the worm. For, for me, based on the credentials and, and what folks have done and notability, for, for me, it's that, very different candidates, like, who's the person who is going to have that secret sauce to give us a chance? And I do, I, I will be dramatic and say, I do think that this is a window to build that trust back to a healthier place between the community and between the school and the schools and the city. And then the window shuts and I, I don't know personal or whatnot, but I've seen that just happen too many times in the Hoya Public School District, when I've worked in it over the last 20 years and different things, is that. Yeah. Now, I, I don't know, my gut plays a real big in, in this one about, in talking to, to all the candidates with it. We're amazing.
So I just, I want to push back just a tiny bit on a couple of things. We didn't write every single comment because it was over and over and over again. So I don't want to give the impression that when we went to Dr. Faginsky Stark, that only one or two people said she was approachable. I put those down for brevity, but it was said over and over again. This is someone who builds teams. This is someone who is approachable, who can be reasoned with, who will listen to you, who will give you a voice, who will help you to soar. So the same kinds of things that we heard with Dr. Peron, we heard from Dr. Faginsky Stark. I can't say this enough to say that I did hear how much people liked him. But I did not hear what I wanted to hear either on the site visit or tonight. I did not hear the specific leadership. And we are looking, yes, we want a likable, down-to-earth superintendent. We've got three candidates who are that. I want someone who has ideas, who will listen to other people's ideas, but who will spark creativity and take us places that we haven't been. I think this is a, a district where it's not just teachers and students who care about education, but I think we have parents looking for creativity. We have parents who want to be involved. What I like about Dr. Faginsky Stark is that she created these family nights. She created these times where teams of people came together to talk, to have a voice, to feel comfortable and to be able to give that input, whether it was curriculum or technology, or special ed, or EL, or social emotional needs. There was always an avenue to bring people in and they came in. How many times in districts, I, I'm in a district where people are very trusting in my district who will schedule something to bring people in and nobody comes. Because they figure, well, you're doing a good job, we won't even bother to come. They're coming with Dr. Faginsky Stark. They're coming into these nights. They're contributing their opinion, they have that voice. So what I heard with her, I did not hear either at the site visit or tonight. And it means a lot to me that we hear more than you get along well with everybody and you, you love kids because every one of them did. You know, I'm looking for something that really, I, I'm really telling you, to me, I've been racking my head since I read the first sets of applications because I think that I'm always weighing just how close these people are. I don't think, we didn't make a five-minute decision because they are very close. They have these great qualities. But again, I need more and I didn't get more from Dr. Peron and that bothers me. And I, I.
Cindy, I'm not going to lie, I was there the whole time and I heard it all. And I don't know, I don't know what you didn't hear.
Ideas.
I really feel like he's got it.
So if I can give like an example, I'm looking back to a question we asked. We asked both candidates about a couple of specific questions, like world languages and what you would do with the plans there and tech curriculum. And the answers I have. And the answers I have from, um, Dr. Faginsky Stark are, um, referencing data, taking financial planning, tying resource allocation to, uh, goals of the community. And that was in particular to world languages. If that is a priority of the community, then that is how you start to reallocate budget issues. Um, to the tech curriculum, a very well thought-out description, both of a tech plan for keeping technology updated in a way that's manageable to the budget um, and a curriculum plan about how you teach kids how to use tech safely. Those questions tonight, um, you know, he was here when it was cut because it was a budget issue. Not sure about, uh, dual language programs, but looking at least at middle school is a first step. That's a much more vague, that's a vague answer compared to a concrete example. Um, when we go to the tech curriculum, it was, it, it doesn't have any semblance of, um, concrete detail. And really, there was no, he did not discuss curriculum, tech curriculum. He did, the only part of that was what do we have to, how do we replace tech? Um, to maintain like the actual hardware or software we have.
Yeah, I circled that too. He didn't even answer. Um, so that's part of it. When, when we're asking these questions, we're asking for specific information and we didn't get those specific answers.
So Cindy, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Because I feel like, um, I mean, well, let me say one thing first and then, then I wanna. So Ben, you asked a very particular question of other people and that question was around, how do we deal with this sort of black cloud?
What do you think about it?
Or what do you think about the black cloud?
Right.
And I, I don't know. And I'm not gonna even pretend that I know even the rumors about what happened in West Springfield, okay? If you have a strong candidate and you don't even give that person an interview, to me, that sells as politics. E- either it's politics being played that the person's not even invited to give an interview or there's something so bad that it's like such a black mark that everybody would know what it was. So I don't, I don't buy this, that there's some big unknown thing that's why this person wasn't even included, right? So for me, there is no black cloud. There's some stinky politics for West Springfield and it sounds like their loss. Whether or not we decide to bring him here, West Springfield has a loss. And that's, that's as far as I wanna say about it. Cause I don't care to go any further. I don't care to try to play rumors. I don't care to try to dig into it more. I don't know, but they have a loss because they've decided to not even interview a strong candidate. May not be the best candidate. Maybe they do wanna go a different direction. But he's still a good candidate and he should have been given an interview. And so that's their loss. That's their politics. To me, that's just stinky and I don't care.
It would have helped me quite a bit if they had it. It would have made a difference.
That's a fair answer. I appreciate that answer.
And Maren, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Whether or not there's a cloud of why he didn't get an interview, that has nothing to do with how I see tonight.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just trying to answer one into the Ben and that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
Ben threw that out to us. He raised the question over the black cloud.
Yeah, that doesn't do anything for me.
Yeah, and I don't, to me, that's not a black cloud. To me, it's like, if they're lost, it's, then move on.
I have my own theories to just why it happens and, you know, I'm just doing it off the top of my head. I don't know anything, so.
I appreciate that answer. I think that's a, a helpful reframing of what happened. So I appreciate that, thinking of the black cloud. Well, no, just that, that if there's a, a good candidate, there's no question in any, anybody's mind that this person's resume qualifies them as a good candidate for a position. If a, a district decides not to interview, there's clearly nothing in his record that points to him not being a good candidate. So I, I appreciate that reframing of like, if there, that points to something else having gone on and I just, I thought that was.
And so my second point then, and, and somewhat of a question, it is, it does come to a question too, is that I, I, what I hear happening right now in terms of our dynamic is that I hear a couple of us getting very solid in their view. And we can spend hours more talking about it. We can go over whether or not we heard a stronger answer or a weaker answer and, and, you know, there are some places where I agree this, you know. Dr. Stark had stronger, more detailed answers, places where I felt the passion and, and the strength of what Dr. Perron is gonna bring to it is, is stronger than some of those just like tangible answers. But I do think that at least hearing around this table, I do think that we have a split vote. But it is still a vote that's pretty much ready to be made. Because we are speaking in a pretty clear way that we have our strongest, that each of us has our decision about what we, who we think is the best candidate. And what I hear is the entrenching of opinions, not expanding or flexible sort of thinking happening right now. I think that we know whether we're gonna vote, we shouldn't spend another two hours talking about it. I think we should just move toward taking either a straw poll vote or however you wanna do. But I think we have, I think we have a ready to deal with the vote.
But I can't, can I at least respond to something Wadeen said about something that happened here? About the language. One thing, um, that disappointed me about, um, Erica, I'm gonna call her Erica, it's just better right now. Her answer about world language, she said it costs district more to have dual language in the elementary level and that isn't true. Um, because the teacher that would be teaching that is having the same number of students that wouldn't be in another class for another teacher. So it, that wasn't correct. And I, I did like Dr. Perron's personal answer about how valuable world language is when you don't even know that you're gonna end up living in another country. So I thought that he had good answers with that. And he did talk about specifics about young children not being able to use Chromebooks and having to use other technology and training that involve that. So he, he did give answers.
Right, well, with the world language, um, question, he never even addressed elementary level. He just said he's in favor of world language. So again.
He said he would have to look at the budget. That's what he said also.
For middle school, he didn't say problem, just.
So I do, let me ask everybody, are we ready to vote? Um, I'm not into having people be entrenched in their vote. I really would like us to listen to each other and listen to our perspectives and then just make whatever decision we, we get. I honestly feel, and I, I do feel good about this, that we have three really strong candidates. So what we're really talking about is we're trying to push which, which person is just a little bit better. So do we discuss more or are we getting close?
I mean, I like Maren's idea of taking a, like even a straw poll or just taking a vote to see where we're, just to put it out there concretely where we are in a, a vote.
Are you going to make a motion?
Someone would have to make a motion.
I'm not, I'm not saying do it right now. I'm just saying for next steps or if we wanna talk or more, I am comfortable with going forward and just taking, making a motion to take a vote.
Before we make a motion, if we're gonna do it, however we're gonna do next, if I can just circle back to the reason that I came up to school committee is to be a voice for the parents. And we have received a lot of feedback in the past four days about, um, Erica Faginsky Stark. That is, the emails that have arrived today in our inboxes are overwhelming in that direction from the community. And I, I feel like that needs to be out there. We're looking for community trust and community input. That is who they are, are emailing us about today.
I will say, yes, that, I'm, I'm glad you shared that because, um, and it's pretty quick.
It's not even close.
Especially even after, after tonight's interview, boom, boom, boom. You know, the answers started to come in and people, people are very much in, huh?
I haven't even looked at them. I have no idea.
Well, in about 15 minutes, we got about 15 emails about one candidate and one about the other. I know, but I'm just saying, not that I did.
Can we talk about the results of this? To talk about what the people who interviewed the four candidates, is that okay? To talk, is this public?
Uh, that is going to be public. So what that is, is just, um.
So eighty-five percent of the people who had, um, an evaluation done after they interviewed the candidates were in favor of Dr. Perron, eighty-three percent in favor of Dr. Erica Faginsky Stark and seventy-four percent in favor of Dr. Bruno. So this shows to me, these were the people that interviewed these people that were in favor of Dr. Perron. And you're talking about parents, but as a teacher, I can tell you, the schools will not run without teachers who feel supported and feel welcomed and feel heard by their superintendent. And without that, a lot of times teachers leave. Dr. Perron has the proven experience, both in this district with people seated, seated here. We've received numerous emails from teachers in East Hampton, all supportive of him. I heard nothing against Dr. Perron. And again, I truly, I asked people in West Springfield for anything negative and I heard nothing negative. And just overwhelming support for Dr. Perron.
So I wanna clarify, that was not something that we requested and it was not, um, the teachers. It was the administrative team that got together and wanted to be able to give that feedback. So I just wanna make that clear. That is not the teachers. That was the, and it was not an interview. It's, you know, a short period of time to, to meet with people.
What I'm saying just speaks to, there's a reason why there's a, that there's this long of a conversation, right? They're both, I mean, I think we're kinda obvious that we're talking about two strongest candidates. There are another step above, Dr. Bruno, we wish him all the best, but that's not, he's not in the final, you know, to make the decision with. Uh, I don't think we have public speak to be able to like.
It's just to clarify what the, what the data on that piece.
So I, I, I think that this speaks to that, and this whole conversation has been, but you're both very strong candidates. And as much as data or emails or, you know, I just don't want this to suddenly become this like teacher administrator versus parents and we've gotta like, you know, I don't think that's what's happening. I think that, yes, we've got emails from parents and we've got opinions from parents. And we've got, we've had emails and communication and public speak from parents and from teachers. And we all, even us here, have different opinions. And we're gonna vote differently and it's gonna come down to probably a four to three vote.
Yep.
And that's just the reality and we can't keep spending more time spinning that we already know that that's where we're gonna be voting. With it, that's the, we're a very large percentage says that's where we're voting in this, out of this conversation. And I think that we just have to accept that, just like the previous time when we had our superintendent vote and search. It was a similar conversation and similar strengths and similar weaknesses. And in the end, we had a split vote and we have somebody that's done a good job as a superintendent, in my opinion. Not the best job and we want, looking for somebody to take us to the next level and we're excited about that. And we have two candidates that we both think are going to take us there. It's about who's gonna be able to take us that extra little bit and be able to give us that much more juice to be able to get to where we're trying to get to. Um, and I think that we just have to accept that we're not gonna get to a place of consensus and we're not a consensus-based body. So we don't have to make a consensus-based decision.
And that's not my plan. My plan was not to have us talk all night. I just wanna give people enough time to really talk back and forth as to how these decisions are made. Because we have candidates that are very close. What is the distinguishing characteristic that brought you to your opinion? So if we are ready to vote and someone wants to put a motion forward.
Can I just make a clarifying statement to this paper that you have brought you? It was said that it was from administration. It wasn't only that. It was from students, administrators and the president.
Okay, it's marked the, the, um, administrative team, yes.
The paper that you're handing to.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna clarify that.
Okay.
And I think the overall impression from that is that Dr. Faginsky Stark and Dr. Peter Perron are essentially neck and neck.
Two points.
Yeah, um, both were received well. I don't know, I just, it seems very obvious whi- which way the, the vote is gonna go and what, what's happening here. I just, if we look, we asked 21 questions. We picked those questions because we cared about the answers to them. And I think there was a very, regardless of prior history or, um, reference it, I, I just think that there were some specific answers given and that the decision, I just would urge my committee members to keep that in mind. There were specific details given in the 21 questions that we asked for, um.
And I, I guess, before we take a vote, that's, that's where I wanna piggyback to. We really wanted the answers to all of those questions. So for me, it's not whether or not, you know, Dr. Perron didn't get an interview in, in West Springfield. It's, it's, these are the questions we asked. Because we were looking for this particular characteristic in our superintendent, we wanted great answers. And I think for me, if you go back and forth to each answer with specifics, that's where I think we need to make that decision. It's not, and I don't mean this terribly, but it's not a popularity contest when we're talking about our superintendent. We're talking about, do you believe as we go forward that this person is gonna have the best answers, the best team building and be able to bring us to solutions when we have issues? And that's how I'm just hoping, no matter who we, we walk away with. That for me is what I hope is the criteria. If your vote is Dr. Perron, it's Dr. Perron. If it's Dr. Faginsky Stark, it's Dr. Faginsky Stark.
So I, I don't mean any disrespect to you, but what you're saying there sounds very judgmental. As if we didn't work, didn't work on 21 questions and ask 21 questions and hear 21 answers from two different people and as if we're taken up with some charisma and that's how we're making our decision? Like, don't, please don't disrespect people that have a different opinion than you.
No.
That wasn't brought up, a special sauce.
That was part of the, uh, regulations.
Now, it's a criticism that one candidate has, yes, but that does, but to tell us that that's how we're deciding and just because we may, having a different answer to it.
No, I'm saying that's how I want us to decide.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I wanna clarify, so hold on here. We've got two candidates who I think are very close and I might, believe it or not, on the record, I'm on the same page as Maren. That was really disparaging. I felt like I was.
I don't mean that it's disparaging.
I mean, we're not voting for, you know, prom royalty and I, I don't even know the guy. My kid didn't go to schools here. Um, and, and honestly, I mean, if you wanna go through every question, I can, I can tell you as somebody who's run trauma-informed schools, who picked some of these questions, the concerns I have with Dr. Stark's answers. I don't think they're realistic.
And I'm fine with doing that.
And I, and a lot of it, but, but this is basically, I mean, I'm not stuck in my vote.
No.
But I, I'm basically being told, being told what I heard and what I asked is less relevant because he's popular. I mean, that's how I feel right now.
I'm sorry if both of you felt that way. It's not how I meant it. What I'm trying to say is that.
I think we should just.
We're coming down to a very, a very tiny piece of data. What's our data? What's our reason for wherever we vote? If, if the, if we walk away tonight and it's Dr. Perron, I'm not gonna feel terrible about it being Dr. Perron. Because that's how close these candidates are. That's what I'm trying to say. Not that you or anybody else who votes for Dr. Perron or, or Dr. Faginsky Stark is doing it incorrectly. I want us to just understand, we are talking about people who are this close. And where are we going to make that decision? I don't care what our votes are. I really don't. I've said that for the last few days. I feel really confident that we're gonna be okay. So that's what I'm trying to say is where is your, what is your reason? And I don't care what it is. But what is your reason for taking two candidates? We have to have a reason why they're just, one is slightly better than the other. See what I'm saying? Does that help? It's not meant to put down anybody who, who feels either way.
I took extensive.
I, I think that's, I, I think that it's, yeah, I just, I, I, we don't have to keep spinning on this. But I don't think that just because we're, have a different final vote, it doesn't come from data of our questions or the intuition of that, what we're gonna make our decision. All those different factors come into it. I mean, I can say very clearly, her answer about being like, I'm gonna take a week to come to the school, but I've got 10 years of central office experience, that's a concern to me. Whereas Dr. Perron is gonna be in this school, every other day, he's gonna be coming to a school, from what I get. Whereas Doctor Perone is going to be in this school, every other day he's going to be coming to a school from what I get a sense from it. And for me who wants us to move towards a student-driven community and district, that's the stronger answer to me.
And see, that's a good thing for me to hear. And so that's what I'm talking about. I want us to look at what happened tonight, that's all I was trying to say. And piece by piece, if you have a reaction to a particular answer, that's important information for us to share. You just shared something that is really important because you didn't like that answer. And I think this is the place to do it. You know, we've all agreed, we're going to be very close. We've all agreed, we can work with either person. So that's what I'm saying, there are distinguishing points for you. What are those points? You have points, what are those? That's what I'm trying to say. Look at the interviews and decide who had the edge for you.
Sure, so Doctor Stark is, seems to be very intemucial finance, we had a great talk about it. She's very strong, we have a strong business manager. I would rather invest in somebody who has other skills that no one else has. I mean, you want the person to know. So that was a big thing for me, that differentiated. The answer to my paragraph-long question around the, the bullying and the pain was, really the, as a superintendent, when that stuff goes down, your command incident, the way that Doctor Perone broke that down with it, there's illegal, there's this, but this is really what we want to do. And it was very concrete and I just pulled back up, you know, Doctor Stark. And it's not like one was, I'm thinking about these answers of what I think our district needs. We have a lot of people who know a lot of things, who have a lot of credentials here, as well as our three candidates before us. But we, I was on my hiring team with the last superintendent, who was be in the community and would be outside of that and all of that, and it didn't work out so well. And, and I really kind of stick to my guns. I mean, I'm still very happy with Doctor Leclerc and the choice I made. But there was, I'm looking for practice of a person who's really going to leave their, their office. But not that sad, I'm also worried if he's out of his office so much, how much, how's he going to do the boring part of his job? I mean, I worry about that every day, so I'm like, okay. But I do say for the, for some of the strengths that I really liked in Doctor Stark, we have them. We have them and we have a process underway on financials to redo those, so they're more transparent. The, my paragraph line, I'm just going to bring it up, the. Okay. Yeah, so on the Sally Smith, the, the approach around, this is what we do and this is why we have a handbook. And we go through that. And if that's the first thing coming in to a superintendent's head when they're assessing this situation and they had the question in advance, I was a little worried about the level of minutia she went into because that's what her teacher or her principal would be doing as a superintendent. She's like texting the school committee. She's, you know, her approach of what you're going to do with the police or not having them come in. Nothing was wrong, but the, that answer for me made an assumption she was in a more stable or she assumed she'd be in a more stable school environment than what we have right now. And we're not there. There are still a lot of different ways to go if you follow the police or not in this district. Not because something horrible, that's just the reality. I think what I was concerned about, she had ideas based on the assumption that our district was in some sort of, of place. And, and it doesn't match up with, like, that's a really important question to me. Like, versions of this happen in school districts all over the country and in ours. And the first response, I mean, it's like, you know, it's like a district has a stroke, right? You've got that much. And that secret sauce, you know, serves for me, it's being so cute to the word. I mean, the science around grit, resiliency, quiet acceptance, being able to step back and let others lead when the decision and responsibility is your own, comes, that's a secret sauce. It's hard, everybody wants to figure out what that is. I mean, I want to figure out what, like, be able to, to, I don't know, do my budget and excel, but it's a skill. And it is, it's the emotional intellect and whatnot. Not that Doctor Stark isn't emotionally intelligent, they all are, but I'm just thinking where East Hampton is now. And, and the expectations, I do language and I, you know, do language and world language. Yes, I think that they are important. But if those are, in my educational experience, those are programs that have to start, like, literally kids in the seats and the parents and the teachers saying we're going to adopt it because it's such a culture shift. And for a superintendent to come in or yet or not, I was okay with actually both of their answers, like, well, we'd have to look at it, like, from a financial, that was a great superintendent answer, that's what they're supposed to do. And then listen to, like, do we want to see those shifts? But again, Doctor Perone had a shift and a perspective that not only, you kept saying, you know, it's not about me, it's not whatever, that, but it, I just felt like he knew nothing was going to work if it was about him, if he had the program or the idea. That in his experience and I weighs heavily on me, is that he taught in prison. I don't know, maybe I could be wrong. I don't know any one of our school administrators, seriously, who has that perspective. That's a great, you know, and, and that really, when I went through his package and I thought, like, you know, that meant a lot to me. I was like, the way he talked about it. And how do you forget that? I, I just think there's a, they're all wonderful. I think about this as a mayor, about my financial partner, about the person who is always going, this is so sharing, going over the insurance bills if we have to pay out a settlement. You know, you want to talk about killing the world language program. Not having the right people in the right place and responding the right time, that's just a civil lawsuit away from not having it. We're not close to that, I'm not, you know, doom and gloom, but I'm thinking about, my position here is as mayor. Financials, how they look at the laws, how they can bring people together, how they could understand, maybe the answer isn't in one program or another program or this or that, but it'll come together and monitor it. Those are just the skill sets that I think that Doctor Perone has and is ready to step into. And does it help that he's known here? I think it helps, I think it hurts. I, I, I think it goes back and forth, you know. But candidly, East Hampton is a very parochial place. And it's just what it is. I mean, it, I tried to describe East Hampton to people. I go and I even, it's like, when you come to East Hampton, count the number of maroon cars and the people who are wearing maroon colored clothing. It's like, that's how we are East Hampton, you know, and I think that there's, yeah, so that's why I'm.
I appreciate that. I have one sort of related thought that I would love to hear opinions about. So one of the things that stuck out to me and I made notes about and wanted to discuss with the answers tonight is there were some really great answers around the prison pipeline, essentially. And anti-racism and that experience in South. And then when he answered the question around the fight, there was the discussion of the SRO, School Resource Officer, and there was no nuance about the research. There's a lot of research. I know this is controversial, but I, that's why I wanted to ask my colleagues, you know, what, what comes to your mind when you see a discussion of a school to, to prison pipeline and, and also using SROs in a, without, without a discussion of the nuance? I don't know, it's just.
To me, that wasn't the conversation tonight. To me, that was a fact. The fact was that school district had an SRO and they utilized the SRO. You know.
No, 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 this was the hypothetical. He's saying, if you have an SRO, like, then the SROs are not there for heavy lifting, they're there for being a resource. We know the data on that, but that's not what SROs.
I, I don't agree with that and I've said that publicly because I work in that district and I am so thankful there's an SRO. And that SRO is really building connections.
No, no, this is about the hypothetical.
I know, but the reason why he came up and said that is because the SROs that I've had the experience and privilege of working with and I can rely on form connections. And it's not the negativity that we hear so often and I spoke to that, no, I did.
I know, but the data is like clear on SROs around the country.
Our SRO is bowling with the kids every Monday, so.
It's, it's, it's definitely the anecdote versus data question. Like, we, we have data on what SROs in schools, what the consequences of that are. Like, that's a countrywide issue we have. I just was curious about your take on not mentioning that nuance, coming from a perspective of someone who has clearly a lot of experience and empathy and compassion and knowledge around the pipeline to prison and how that relates to education. I just was curious about.
No, I thought it was, I mean, it, I definitely heard it, I mean, and wondered. I mean, we all know how I feel about that, like, no way. And I mean, as far as whatever control I have over it, I don't care who's superintendent, I don't want an SRO back in the school. We don't have the level of criminality that other schools do, including West Springfield and East Hampton. No, but I did, I mean, that was kind of like a, you know, I was like, hmm, but it didn't. I also know a lot of folks who are intimately involved in prison, you know, school, the prison pipeline and the SROs who are SROs. I don't.
That was a good answer.
I mean, I, I thought it was, yeah, I, yeah, it wasn't the, and there are a couple of programs that Doctor Stark and Doctor Bruno mentioned that made me kind of cringe, but I think it's about their toolsets. I, I think all three of them, and I agree with Cindy, no matter who is the next superintendent, I, I feel like there's a conversation, like, around SROs, like, okay, Doctor Perone or okay, Doctor Stark. Like, I, I feel like there's that, that conversation and there, to talk about why we would have concerns, me as mayor, us as a committee or whatnot. I, I do think that's, I feel like with both of them. I mean, there were, with the SRO, yeah, it's kind of like, it's interesting.
But I appreciate that you brought up the difference of East Hampton and West Springfield. And it's a very different place.
So are we ready to, is somebody ready to make a motion?
I should, there's one last stop from my.
Yeah, sorry, did you want to stop?
No, 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 no. I appreciate the discussion for sure and I can see that we're headed in a certain direction. I am looking forward to being.
I'm just going to stand up, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm looking forward to being, to living in a constantly inspired district. Like, if that's where, if that's where we're headed, I want to be, I want to be moved and challenged and I'm looking forward to that. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be a new, a fresh perspective for sure, hopefully. I hope, I hope that we as a committee are not just sort of loud all the time, you know, and I hope we, we ask concrete questions and sort of are able and willing to hold him to the fire. I mean, for, for better and or worse, because I think we, uh.
Or, or her, I have to, like, so, again, I was on the last school committee and, and that vote. And I think about who is where on those candidates and the promises we all made about blah, 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 blah. And that didn't go so well, we didn't really do that much.
No.
We didn't, we didn't do the follow-up we said we would. So if you say that, this is, that is, are you really going to do that?
Well, I'm hoping.
And I'm going to say that to each one of you.
Please, are you a person?
Are you really going to do that? Because I've talked to you, I mean, I've talked to members of this committee about this really needs to be called out.
Well, I think that's what I'm saying.
I have filed 501As on our own school district. And has anybody other than I done that, having the same knowledge? No, this is very important to me.
Well, I would like to.
And I do not see, I do not see Dark, Doctor Stark, ready to reach or, or cross that emotional and intellectual bridge. I just don't.
Okay. Well, what I'm trying to say is that I hope that as a committee, we are willing to maybe just rise up a little bit around like, so there are some things that I feel like with this process were maybe like glossed over or happened a little too fast. I don't know that we should have done this tonight. I think it would have been better to have an opportunity for parents to weigh in after the fact entirely. Yeah, I, I just, I think there's some work that we can do to be a little bit more responsive to some, some of the things that are going on in the community. And, and be a little more accessible. I think one of the problems I had was that we spent a lot of time talking about the points of families and of connection, of equity is a huge motivating force in this district. And it just seemed like it's a small example of a contradiction where I think that we didn't do a good job of allowing families to, like, whoever can get involved, whether it be on Zoom or here in person. We live in a world right now where I just don't think we should force people to have to like skip dinner and find a babysitter. And it's like, oh, there's all these reasons why acting like it's somehow lazy to not come out to the ice.
So why not say something?
Nobody said, nobody said is this lazy?
Oh, no, I did, I'm just saying that's.
Why not say something? I pushed back hard on Monday.
But that was Monday.
Right, because like. I didn't know until Monday there was no virtual, I just assumed there would be.
In the beginning of the process and the document, I mean, I, I don't know, say no, this has, I don't, I mean, it's too, too go past, but, but then that is the step up. I mean, I read how it was going to go and I was like, okay. And then my mother sent me a Facebook page that said something different and I called Cindy and said, hey. I, I don't know, I, as we're going forward, as Cindy puts this through, you say no. Or you look, you know, you say like, oh wait, this doesn't have to be any one way.
For what it came to the question of making decisions.
But only on Monday.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
And it didn't, it didn't, it didn't go over. I think we, I think we just can do maybe a better job listening to the community. But that's, that's my perspective. And I'm, and I appreciate, again, I'm ready to move forward.
Can I?
One thing I do want to clarify about you pushing in on Monday about, about Zoom is we mentioned in every school committee meeting that this would be in-person. And it wasn't in-person hybrid and it wasn't on Zoom. And I did not hear until the very end, there's no way to change that at the very end. We made it pretty clear it was going to be in-person interviews. And I think if we want to go forward and say the next time, but maybe there won't be a next time for many years. It depends on what's going on, then you can change that for the next time. But I think the process, and I, and I just will defend it, I think the process was done very smoothly. I think our search committee did a great job. I think we had three great candidates. I think the fact that we're this close, you know, arguing about two candidates says a lot about the strength of both of them. I think what's coming out of this, I know from the last time when there were two candidates, when Allison got hired, it was a very close vote and we were all able to work with either person. We were at that same juncture. So what we're really talking is about these nuances. But I think the process as it was, was the way it was supposed to be. If we want to change it for a future time, that's a big difference. And I just want to say that because yes, it's great, we can always come up with new ideas for how to do things. But we can't do them less.
And as far as listening to the community, I mean, I don't want to say I take offense, but the community is not monolithic. As far as me not listening or listening or reading or not reading a bunch of emails or whatnot, I just, like, if I learned anything about being mayor, the community, it's 16,000 people and the thing they have in common is that they live in East Hampton. And the person you decide is a part of a community that's going to like this or not because of the last email is the wrong way to go. My, my decision is made by reading, sure, the, all the emails and whatnot. And there are vocal folks on vocal, on the issues and I respect that. But I in no way ever say that that is the community, it's not. We should, I mean, that's, I feel sometimes the trouble I've gotten into, we've gotten to it, is as a public body, is about this idea of a community of who's communicating and who's not. It's who feels comfortable or who feels whatever. So I don't really like this idea that four days in, the community started speaking out. Well, okay, I speak to the community all the time, maybe not the people you do. But I, you know, there's a whole, I mean, trust me, talk to Don Torrey and Jen Sandler on the same day. They're both a part of the community, I respect them both, they're very different. They're very different.
I agree.
And, and I think that that should be acknowledged too. And that this decision is not just for kids in the school district, but it's for the whole city. And it is paid by the taxpayers and that sounds cold calculus, but it is the truth. And this, and this board is looking at a school district with a number of kids in it that are usually in one building. with a number of kids in it that are usually in one building. So everyone in the community gets to weigh in, more and more.
Just so you know, my comments not about the, the superintendent. My comments about us as a board just being a little bit more specific to parents', uh, concerns. I feel like, uh, the superintendent position, yes, is a, is a citywide role. I'm thinking more about just the ways in which a lot of parents that I speak to in, at Mountain View all the time are not uh, feeling connected to the community. They don't, they don't, they express real qualities with the way we do things. That's all. You know, we're, we're, we're in this position to pay attention to that. And I think we could do a little bit of a better job. Okay.
I agree, but I also wanna say that there are thousands of other people in the community who are fine.
Who's all that? I'm not even denying that.
And I, and so, uh, well, it, it just feels like it's either or. And I, I just, that dynamic is not playing well for me.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would add to that is that, like, I feel, was there any, like, mistake in the process? No. I feel like a fairly intelligent person. I was surprised on Monday there was no virtual. Like, I understand that the, the language was very specific that it was in-person, not in-person hybrid. I'm just saying I can empathize with folks in our community who did not understand that. Because I did not understand that until Monday, that there was no Zoom link for it. Um, that is the kind of thing I think that Ben was talking, like, that is what I'm hearing from parents, like, y- yeah, you're right. It was four days ago that they figured out they weren't gonna be able to watch these. And then they got really fired up about it.
Three years on Zoom.
Three years, like, I missed it. I missed that.
All of a sudden you have to show up. I mean, it's not, it's not that weird. I, at least, you know what I mean? At least I can probably like that.
Ultimately, we're representing democracy, right? So
Yeah.
we are elected officials. We've been elected to make a decision. It's not for the community to make a decision. It's for us to make this decision. So we take everybody's opinion, both in terms of how we get elected and then what, who people talk to us in the meantime, but then we make the decision. So whether or not somebody could get an email to us, or I've seen a couple of emails saying, you should wait till tomorrow. Why? We, to me, it's like, we've had our, we've had our interviews. We've had all the information come in. People had a chance to give feedback. Maybe they want some time to, so they can sleep on it. I don't need more time to sleep on it. I'm ready to make a decision now. So, uh, you know, I, I would say that we are ready to make a vote. Let's make a vote. If we wanna talk about process, about how to include more people, yeah, let's have that conversation. It doesn't need to happen at eleven o'clock at night.
Definitely, that's not what I'm saying either. I'm just, I'm, I'm making a comment that in the future it would be good, like, if we could just pay a little bit more attention to some of these details.
There's a version of that.
Uh, that's it, yeah.
It's way past my bedtime.
So does somebody wanna make a motion?
So how do you want this motion to be made? Cause it sounds like you need to make a motion that
I think, put, somebody put somebody forwards, but
You have it in your
Yeah.
In the packet. Because you most likely do not want to adjourn. You most likely want to have, so you go and make your own call.
Yeah.
If you choose to do it otherwise, then that's your choice of committee. But the recommendation is, yeah.
So you make a motion to offer a candidate position of pending successful contract negotiations.
You cannot, you cannot have another meeting at least. Tuesday night, I can amend, if I need to, the agenda for Tuesday night. Just a reminder, you do have a public hearing and that agenda is extremely long.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do know, we're not asking anything more for Tuesday.
Um, no, we're making the decision tonight. And just so everybody else knows, once we have a vote, then we are going to step into quickly executive session. And, um, we'll be coming back with an answer. Okay?
You will go into executive, you'll take a break first.
Yeah, but then we'll go into executive session and come out. Yeah, okay.
Let's hope they're awake still.
Stay awake. So do we have a motion?
So we're making, so the motion then is for a specific candidate.
I think so, yes, at this point.
And it, so I will make a motion that we would, that we would like to offer position of superintendent to Dr. Rita Perron as our school committee, uh,
Pending successful contract negotiations.
Pending successful contract negotiations. Thank you. Yeah, blew my vows. Um, uh, and that we will be calling them after this conversation to confirm their acceptance of this position.
And I second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lauren Go, Lauren. Laurie Garcia, aye.
Megan Harvey, nay.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, yes.
Dunham?
Dana Hirstine, no.
And Cola Chapala, yay.
And Cindy Krasinski, nay. So that is four to three. So, four to three? All right. So we will go and stand for a minute and then go with the please. And we'll try to be brief. And do what we need to do and we'll be right back. So, um, did you hear?
He thought his phone was on.
So, so pending successful negotiation.
I think it's very, very Yeah, I'm gonna go on.
We've been in contact with Dr. Perron and, um, aside from the rest of our negotiations with this contract, he's accepted the position. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have to adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, Maren?
Aye.
I second that.
I, Buenos Aires.
What? I hear a secretary? What? Oh.
She's coming out.
We've already made a motion, seconded it, and we're, we're rolling, calling out.
We have to tell her who
I can, you post, what did you do? What did you say?
Motion to adjourn and
And second.
Then you didn't announce anything?
Yes.
I did, I did. So I announced that pending successful negotiations on the rest of his contract, Dr. Perron has accepted the position as Superintendent for East Hampton.
Seven to zero vote, seven to zero vote. On the adjournment.
On the adjournment, okay.
Twelve twenty-five.
Right history. And so now we're adjourning regular session. We've had a motion, we've had a second, go ahead. Lori?
Aye. Megan Harvey, nice night.
Shannon Dunham, good night.
Dana Hirstine, no.
Uh, Mary La Chapala, nay.
And Cindy Krasinski, tonight. And thank you so much for everything you did.
Thank you very much.